All right, good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, September the 8th at 7:00 PM at the Downers Grove Civic Center. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Bernard.
Here.
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis is on her way. Member Hannes.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Thomas.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here.
Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and to indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed at the basket over there by the main entrance. I have allotted 30 minutes for public comment tonight. We're going to start off, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for a proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Dr. Harris, for a quick presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, I'm here to present to you information about the FY 2026 budget. Just to get it all done at the same time, though, I'm also going to talk about some other topics in addition to that, including cash flow. So I have what is a very long presentation. I am very happy to be interrupted at any time you wish in order to ask questions or to prevent me from using any jargon that you don't understand, because I do have the tendency to do that. So interrupt me as you please, and we'll get through this together. Of course, the most important business from my department tonight is approving the 2026 budget. The Board of Education heard a presentation on our tentative budget at the August 11th meeting. We put the budget on display on August 5th for the required 30 days. The budget was on display on our website, and there was a physical copy in the district office that anybody from our community could come by and take a look at our budget and look at our revenues and our expenditures and our fund balances and ask questions and so on and so forth. And there will be a hearing tonight where the public can engage with the board and before the board will eventually approve the budget in the action portion of the agenda. We had a lot to say about the tentative budget, and we have done a lot of work since then, scrutinizing all of our expenditures, looking at all of our revenues, we did the cash flow analysis, and then we did some work to calculate what we think are accurate cash fund balances for June 30th of 2025. So first of all, the thing I want to explain to you is the delta between what we projected as a surplus back in August, which was about $130,000, to what is actually on the budget you're approving tonight, which is approximately $575,000. So there were some gains and some losses. The loss, the one thing that shrunk our surplus was an increase in the cost of teacher lane changes that was not calculated originally back in August, and that was about an amount of $66,000. And so what that means is that when our certified staff, which is protected and covered by the collective bargaining agreement with the Downers Grove Educational DGEA.
Elementary.
There you go. The DGEA collective bargaining agreement allows for our teachers, when they get certain amounts of hours beyond their bachelor's degrees, to get raises in alignment with our salary schedule. So that costs $66,000, which had to be added to the budget. We were able to come together as a cabinet and talk about our departmental budgets. We were able to find about $100,000 in savings by trimming some things that we thought were nice to haves rather than need to haves. We got our SACID tuition bill, SACID being our special ed cooperative, and we were pleased to see that the projected tuition was less than what we had budgeted. So we think there's about $200,000 for the savings there. And then there was a decision made administratively to reduce seven vacant instructional aid positions with salaries and benefits. Those are approximately $30,000 each. So we budgeted an increase to the surplus of about $210,000. And so that's where you see our surplus growing a bit. Still not exactly where we need to be, but movement in the right direction. We still think this is a conservative budget. I indicated that there were some savings from SACID. I think there's a good chance, hopefully, I can't be 100% sure, but we think that there's a chance that we could save more. Basically, you know, we left some contingency in there, because you never know what number of students might move in and require services from SACID. So we're just leaving a little bit of buffer there just to be safe. And then we also think, if we're being optimistic, if we allow ourselves to be optimistic, that we should see perhaps more revenue from our mandated categoricals and our corporate personal property replacement tax than we originally anticipated, based on getting some new figures from the state's office, the State Board of Education. This is a graph that I showed you last time. It has not really changed. There's just updated figures on there. The green slice of the pie being our local revenue, that's always the biggest one by far, state much, much smaller, but our second biggest chunk, and then federal in yellow is our smallest slice of the pie. Here's our expenditures by object, salaries and benefits, of course, being an enormous chunk of what we do every day, 75% or so, purchase services coming in at 13%, supplies in the green, and then dues and other, and then dues and other, as a reminder, would mostly include SACID tuition and our private facility tuition. Last but not least, if you look at all of our expenditures across all funds, operating and non-operating, that's how it's all broken down. We have a lot, this is skewed, of course, because we have referendum construction products going on, so that actually takes up a huge chunk of the pie. But in a normal year, that purple section would be much, much, much smaller, and you would see that our educational funding is where most of our spending comes from. This is a very busy slide, and you might need your readers to see all the numbers, but the number I always look at when I'm looking at this slide is in the bottom left. You see the 573, 949, next to surplus and deficit, that is our projected surplus according to this budget. And across the top are all of our fund balances as of June 30th, and then at the bottom would be our projected fund balances for June 30th of 2026. The 25% figure in the very bottom left there, that is how we are choosing to delineate our fund balances. As the board knows, and as the community probably knows well, if they've been paying attention, is we have a 35% fund balance policy. It's our perception, talking about it as administrative team and talking about it with the FAC, that the 35% fund balance policy is still a very important policy, but the way that we had calculated our progress towards 35% in the past was convoluted and overly messy. And so we feel like it's much better just to be very simple and clear in how we are portraying our year-end fund balances. So that way, we just, we think that transparency and candor is a better way of doing things. So we, in the past, we would accrue things in between fiscal years. We would take revenue from fiscal year 2026 and move it back into 2025, and we would take expenditures from fiscal year 2025 and move them into 2026. And as Dr. Russell and I tried to kind of sort it out and make sense of it, it just wasn't something that we felt like we could really portray in a clear and concise way to the community. So we decided to just abandon that and just be as simple as we possibly can. We get numbers from our auditors on June, as of June 30th, what our operating fund balances were, and we plug them in, and there's our expenditures. They're subtracted, and our revenues are added, and those are our fund balances. To address some of the challenges we've had with the 2026 budget, as I indicated, we feel like the practices that we had in the past weren't reliable and really weren't up to the standards that we have for transparency and clarity. So we wanted to kind of just throw that out and kind of start fresh and be very clear, like I said, with the 35% fund balance policy. We did, through all of this, we did a comprehensive analysis of our budgeting processes, and we determined that we're not hitting 35%. And to be clear, it's our perception that we really haven't been hitting 35%. It's not like we just lost 10% of fund balance over the last year. We actually had a surplus in 2025, so our fund balances grew. But we are further away from, we are not close to the 35% fund balance policy. We just think that we never truly were. If the board recalls, in June of 2025, you approved an amended budget for fiscal year 2025. The amended budget called for fund balances of 35.9% and a surplus of nearly $5 million. We don't know exactly what the surplus is for fiscal year 25 yet, because we're still being sussed out with the auditors, but we know that we're nowhere near $5 million. It's probably a fraction of that, probably $1 million would be a good estimate. So we just don't think we had really a good way of looking at the data, and we just want to make things clearer and cleaner and easier going forward. But accepting that reality is also requiring us to accept the reality that we have not, the resources available to us to make the $750,000 capital transfer. And with a surplus of only $575,000, that's not realistic to expect in this fiscal year. And so we'll have to delay, we'll have to push that off as well. And while we acknowledge that the budget is balanced for this year, and we did achieve a surplus last year, we know that our revenues are not at all keeping up with our expenditures, and we'll discuss that more in a second. And the other big thing I'm going to discuss later on after that is managing our fund balances so we're able to survive our low cash point, which comes every year in May. So like I just said, our revenues not being able to keep up with our expenditures is one of the two big problems that the district has to face, the other one being our low cash point. And of course, they're related, but we'll talk more about that. This chart here is an example of an increased cost. And before anybody, I want to be very clear about this. I was afraid when I was talking to Dr. Russell that I want to be very careful about what I said in this presentation, because I don't want to, I don't want it to seem like I'm saying this is not a good expense. This is a great expense. This is something that the board debated, the board agreed to, and it serves the needs of our students in a very important way. But since the pandemic happened, we now have a significantly increased need for special services for our students. Those would include social work, health, and psychological services. So we have seen since 2020, if you look at the chart there, the blue line is the actual spending under those three functions, social work, health, and psychological services. Again, I'm not bemoaning that we have to spend this money. I think it's great that we are spending this money and that we have the money available, but it's just an indication of how our costs are going up and our revenue is not keeping pace with that. So the blue line is the increase of costs, but the red line is we're pretty much everything else in our, the red line represents how much that should have grown if those costs kept paid with the rest of our ed fund spending. So you can just see how the blue far outspends the red, and that, that's a, this year, approximately $2 million that we've invested here, and we don't have, we have not been able to find the necessary revenue to support that expenditure. We talked about transportation last month, but it's worth bringing up again. Transportation is another cost that has gone up significantly since the pandemic. In fiscal year 2019, which was the last year, the last normal year before the pandemic, our transportation costs were about 4.1 million, 4.4 million dollars. And in the most recent fiscal year, our transportation costs, this is unaudited, of course, but they were about $8 million, 8.1 million dollars. So nearly a doubling in a matter of six years. This is exacerbated by the fact that the state, which reimburses us for some of our transportation costs, the state is prorating our reimbursements every year. So instead of getting 100% of what we're eligible to receive, this year, we're receiving approximately 70% to 73% of, for regular education, and approximately 60% to 63% for special education. When it was not too long ago, we were receiving upwards of 90, between 90 and 95%. So what does that mean for us was, if we got, if our proration this year was the same as it was just a few years ago, we'd have an extra $600,000 in revenue this year. Additionally, the district, we've been trying to find opportunities with other government entities, for example, DuPage County, for support to cover our ballooning homeless transportation costs. When the interim housing center opened up in our neighborhood, that, the number of homeless students in our community grew significantly, obviously. And because of federal McKinney Vental legislation, we are required to provide transportation to those students. If they are, if they are residing in our district, they have the right to return to their home district, wherever that may be. That could be in Downers Grove, it could be in Palatine, it could be in Bowling Brook, it could be in any number of places, but we're required to help transport those students. So as the board is aware, over the course of the life of the interim housing center, our homeless transportation costs have, for a period of time, doubled every year. It went from 200,000 to 400,000, 800,000 to like 1.6 million. And what we've been seeking some respite from other agencies in our area, we have not found that yet. And then later on in the agenda, actually, the board is going to approve a transfer, a loan of funds from the working cash fund to the transportation fund, because we had a deficit on June 30th. And in order to prevent that from happening again in fiscal year 2026, this is a good time to just point out that we are taking money from our educational fund, and we have to put that into our transportation fund. So just the, we don't have the dollars anymore in our transportation fund to cover all of our increased expenses. Okay, another issue with our revenue not keeping up with our expenditures has to do with PTEL, or the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. PTEL was passed in approximately 1993, is my guess, it's right around there. PTEL is also known as tax caps, and the board is familiar with this. We talk about this every year when we get to our levy. In tax cap districts, DuPage County being one of them, when you grow your levy from one year to the next, you are allowed to grow it by 5% or CPI, whichever is smaller. For the 30 years of PTEL, 28, the first 28 were all CPI. We never got to 5%. But in 2022 and in 2023, CPI was 7% and 6.5% respectively. So that was the first year that we were capped. We were not able to go all the way up to CPI with our new revenue, with our property taxes. So what this means is that if we were not capped in those two years, we would have been able to claim more revenue in our property taxes. That would allow us to bring in new dollars to help us keep up with all of our expenditures. As inflation was raging, that had an important, a huge impact on our expenditures, obviously, from our contracts with our transportation, with subscriptions, with food service, with any, you know, any supplies, all those things went up. Our construction costs, of course, were hit by inflation, but our new revenue was not able to keep up with that because of the tax caps. And so when we calculated it, if we weren't capped in 2022, 2023, and 2024, in the last three years that the board has passed a levy, our property tax revenue was diminished by $6 million. And I know that people are saying, well, Greg, you live in the community, you don't want to pay more taxes. You're not complaining about this, are you? No, I'm not complaining about it. I'm just illustrating that our, another way that our revenue is just not keeping up with our expenditures, and just because of the circumstances at the macroeconomic level. And the one thing, again, the takeaway there is that our revenue is capped, but our expenditures are not. Okay, this is my last slide here in the revenues versus expenditures back and forth. The evidence-based funding, we've talked about before. This is, this went into effect in fiscal year 2018. We discussed what this means at the last meeting, but in short, evidence-based funding is the state's model for funding school districts. All 860-some school districts in the state are funded by the state through evidence-based funding. It's a, it's a very complicated calculation, and all school districts are placed into one of four tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four. The tiers at the bottom, tiers one and two, are for districts that aren't able to generate locally an amount of money sufficient to reach an adequacy level, which means that basically they can't generate through property taxes an amount of money that the state deems necessary to provide an adequate education for all of its students. District 58, for most of the life of EBF, evidence-based funding, has been in tier three. But up until fiscal year 2024, it was in tier three, we were able to get some new revenue. Not a lot, but we were able to keep our EBF going a little bit, growing each year, 2018 through 2022, and then in 2024, we hit tier four, which is the highest tier. And in tier four, that's when you, if you look at the graph, you can see the red line is where we, if we kept up with CPI, where our evidence-based funding should have been going. And then, so you can see, we did okay between 2018 and 2023, but then in 24, and 25, and 26, you start seeing a gap in between the red line and the blue lines, meaning that our EBF is no longer keeping up with CPI, and we, as a district, are required to make up the delta with other funding revenue, with other funding streams. So while we were able, we actually, for the first number of years of EBF, we were able to do a little bit better than CPI. We saw some growth because we were tier three. When we hit tier four in 2023, we basically, our new revenue from EBF is nada, for all intents and purposes. So if you do, if you do the math, if we had stayed tier three, if we had never actually hit tier four, we, in 24, 25, and 26, if we had gotten new revenue that kept up with CPI, we would have, we would have an extra million dollars in our fund balance at the end of this year. It's not a million dollars per year, that's a few hundred thousand dollars every year that would add up to a million dollars of extra fund balance if we had that available to us. But hitting tier four and being held harmless did us a disservice in terms of being able to claim new revenue. Okay, this is a good time to pause before I, that's the, that's the presentation on the budget. And I know the, there's more to go, but I could use a breath, and if anybody has any questions on the budget or anything related to that, now would be a good time to stop and process.
Greg, there's a couple of points, and that our separation from revenue and expenses, I think is important to point out, that it's not like we drastically changed our busing. You know, that our expense has gone up significantly and significantly higher than CPI. That's not because we got fancier buses or anything along those lines, or started running more routes. But that actually grew at a rate, just the expenses of running that between fuel and staffing and all those, has been a huge increase for us, on top of the fact that we are now getting reimbursed at a lower rate. And so when you point out those things, and you kind of referenced it here when you talked about with EBF, how we would have an additional million dollars right now, is that this stuff is compounding. So as this stuff begins to fall off in different areas over the years, it becomes very, very difficult for us to close the gap if we're getting reimbursed at 60-some-odd percent of our last year's expenditures, but our expenditures this year for that same service are going up.
Are 4% to 6% more than they were last year.
Right. And as we go forward, you know, and we use words like surplus that sound good, but what you've done here is simplify the math, which I really appreciate, and we're going to have to figure out, we're finding out that we weren't running our, we weren't able to get to 35% fund balance, and I don't see any way for us to do that this year, which is going to have to spark, not today, but a longer conversation around what's our plan to get there. And I know we can talk about that in future FAC meetings, et cetera. But I think the only thing I want to add, you know, to this, is that as I'm looking at this, these are millions of dollars that are stacking up here, and I'm a tax, everything I can do to keep our tax rate low is incredibly important to me, but it sounds, it sounds so terrible when you're like, oh, we hit all the way up to our cap. Like, what a lot of revenue that must have been, but when our expenditures and some of our stuff was going up double-digit percentages. And while we can't talk about it today, I think as we go forward in some of these things, we got to find out what it is that we're going to do to help close the gap. Obviously, we'll continue to advocate and talk to the state, but you said something early on, and this is where all this is going, is it sounds like you budgeted pretty conservatively, but I sensed a hint of optimism that percentage-wise, some of our mandated categoricals might start to tick up a little bit. Like, what gives you that sense of optimism?
Well, Ms. Kovar and I, we submit our claim to the state, and so that we do get a number that we think, we think is going to be greater than what we got last year. However, with, we don't actually know the percentage of proration yet. Everything we've gotten is an estimate so far, and we won't know the percentage of proration until the state releases it, which won't be, which will be in November.
Right.
And so we're just playing it safe, and because with, you know, you've been on the board for a long time, you know, you know about proration. You were on the board the time we were, when we were supposed to be getting four mandated categorical checks each year, we were only getting three. So, you know, we're not going to count our chickens until they hatch.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Greg, you had mentioned, or we have talked as a board before about the transportation costs going up. This is one of the newer times for me seeing the social work, health, and psychological services. I could infer that based off of where our money goes, it's probably salaries. Is that an increase in staffing?
Yeah. FTE, and I, I'm not, I can't speak to the amounts, but there was, there was an intentional increase of FTEs following the COVID pandemic.
Okay, that those positions are still in place. And then, when talking about the interim housing center and talking about what the district has done to try and make stakeholders aware who could potentially help with covering some of those costs, are there things this board can do? Are there things we can go to our community of advocating? Because obviously, like, we want all kids to get an education, and those kids that are within 58, like you have said, it is our responsibility. But what are some of those places that we have appealed to, and what can we do to help with that?
So the biggest thing for that is going to the county board. And the county board is in a difficult spot, because they don't fund schools, right? And so, you know, in our conversations with the county board, it was, well, we don't fund schools, you guys have your own ways to fund that. And I said, you're absolutely correct, you don't fund schools. The issue that we have in our district, and everything you said about educating kids within District 58, especially those in the homeless centers, is vital, and it is super important. What the county has done in their previous homeless model, when the pad shelters were running from typically a church to a church to a church, it was spread throughout DuPage County, and each, you know, organization would take a night or two. They've done a really good thing for their model by consolidating it into one central spot. It works very, very well for them. One of the things we expressed, both District 99 and District 58, was concerns, not with centralizing the model, not having the students come to us, but the transportation, and we were assured that they would help us with that. Well, what the county ended up doing, in my view, was they took the federal COVID money that they got, and they just put that all into the center. They didn't, it was a one-time expense, so to speak, and then pads hold itself up through donations and things like that. The problem is, they didn't put a long-term plan in for the cost to the local school districts. And one of the things that I have gotten a little bit of, how can I phrase this, people being receptive to, is that increased transportation costs directly related to the IHC. So the county's fiscal year is December 1st. We are going to put in a request for our true costs of transporting kids not only to and from the center, but also kids that may have been in the center, that may have now gone back to their, or found more permanent housing in Chicago. They're still eligible to stay here, but we have to now split that cost with CPS, and that's what we're going after with the county. So I intend to meet, I'm waiting to hear back on the date, but I intend to meet with the head of the, basically my equivalent position to the county board, and say, what do we need to do to put this funding request in so it gets in on time? And then what do you need from our school board? So there'll be more to come on that, but really pressing those county board members to help support the IHC, because it's not just the funding for the building, it's the ongoing cost associated with that, especially around transportation.
And I'm on the executive committee for Lend, which is our lobbying group for DuPage County, and I'm also on the financial committee there. And we had a meeting last week where we were talking about MCATs and how they affect, they affect, MCATs is a DuPage topic, particularly because most of the districts in DuPage are tier three and tier four, maybe two. Maybe two or three aren't tier three or two-four. So getting more money into MCATs is a big priority for all of us. So, but, so we're trying, we have our, we have a big meeting in September that's in person. And it is, it is usually well-attended by a lot of our representatives from across DuPage County. So I'll be there speaking to them about, about this. But also, I told the story to my fellow CSBOs in this meeting and to the executive director of Lend. And they all agree that, you know, it would be okay for, for me to, you know, tell our story a little bit in regards to the IHC, to see what could be done. So just to get, just to get people to understand our situation, to, you know, anybody, if we get any help in Springfield, that'd be great as well.
So do we have a tiered plan for this? Because we've been hearing about the transportation costs related to the IHC. Like, do we have, you know, any more aggressive, I'm not gonna go too far into what I mean by that, but any more aggressive approaches if none of this works?
Yeah, so the-
At our disposal? And then the other side of this is, I mean, there's money being taken away from the kids that the money is intended to assist by causing this transportation, additional transportation costs. And so children may be in a better, more stable environment, which is wonderful. But the money is being taken from their education.
So one of the other things that I'm going to be doing is reaching out to the state superintendent of schools. And through ISB, because I agree with everything that you just shared, Melissa. The IHC has worked so well here in DuPage County in terms of centralizing it. It's a model that they're looking to replicate. And so while we are the first school, because this homeless center caters more to families with young children, that's why it impacts us more than it impacts the high school. If they start replicating this in other color counties like Lake or Will, you're gonna find other districts in the same spot. And so one of the other requests that we're gonna be making to the state board is, is there an avenue for special funding when you centralize a homeless model? Because the way the transportation law is written under the McInnes-Vento legislation requires us to develop all of these cost shares. And it's almost impossible for us to know what those are gonna be every single year because of the nature of the homeless center. Where kids might move in for a week or two, they might find more permanent housing in a different suburb, but then we're still attached to them. And so the more that kids move in and out of there, the more ride shares that we have. So this is also, I don't wanna call it a loophole in the state law, but an unintended consequence in the state law. And so that's one of the things we're also gonna be seeking assistance for from ISB to see. Are there other funding avenues that you might be able to build in your budget specifically related to a centralized homeless center?
Right, because I would encourage that wonderful model that exists that helps so many families, but at the same time not cause, you know, an undue burden on the districts that are taking that on, which, you know, we're happy to take on. Financially, it's, you know, we now have a record story to tell. Whereas before it was kind of conjecture, we think it's costing us more money. We don't know where it's gonna go, we don't know what the numbers are. But we've been in this now for a few years. So I think the numbers should be a little more clear where they're going.
Correct. And then internally, one of the other things we intend to do is to sit down with all of our transportation providers and to see what other economies of scale, see how we can press our transportation providers, especially for those routes that aren't on traditional buses as well, to see how much room we can get from that as well.
Yeah, because the last thing I would wanna do is have a story that it's the interim housing center causing this high stress level when there's other transportation, you know, wait being caused by other places too, like the transportation companies themselves. So there's a balance there between the two. I'd like to see a little bit more information financially on what that looks like. What, what is that actually, right?
I think the, the bigger piece of that is, is yes, homeless transportation has exploded. But when you look at overall transportation, that's not the only problem with transportation. It's, you're capped at a certain level. And our providers, whether it's transportation, copy machines, food services, gray share, they don't cap their charges at what we're capped on. So that's the, the big issue with transportation is we're experiencing transportation increase because prior to the pandemic, when you had a surplus of bus drivers, the starting wage for bus drivers was so much less. Now it is so much more, it's almost doubled. And along with fuel prices and things like that, that is another piece of this as well.
Absolutely.
I did wanna compliment too, I think, each time we're seeing this budget, at least as someone newer to the board, it's easier to understand. I don't have a financial background in education finance. And I think that the more that we can do that to make it digestible to the average taxpayer is so important because there are so many rules of, like when you were talking about the capital, like, yeah, it looks inflated, but that's just because of a referendum. We can't borrow money from there to pay teachers that when you just hear that word surplus, surplus, just like you were saying, Member Hughes, people immediately are like, oh, then we're good. The story is a little bit more complicated than that. So I would just challenge us to continue to make sure that we are taking things that it shouldn't have to take a degree to look at a budget. So anything that we can do to make it more understandable, I think, to our taxpayers is-
Yeah, we like to remind ourselves that our audience isn't just the seven of you. That our audience is, is anybody who is in the audience here or watching on YouTube a month or two from now. Like, there's, there's a lot of people we have to, who's, we have to make sure can access this information.
No, I appreciate that. And your feedback on this, you know, please, as Greg shared at the beginning, if you wanna see something different or more easily digestible, please let us know. The biggest issue with, with our budget is not overspending or not having all these, you know, fancy things in the district. We live very, you know, lean here in, in the district. The biggest issue that we have is not spending more than we're taking in, it's savings. And how much do we have in savings to get through that low cash point? And that's what Greg is gonna talk about. That, that's the biggest issue that we have right now. How do we build up savings with these challenging times where revenues just aren't keeping pace with the, quite frankly, mandated expenses that we have?
So Greg, I'm gonna ask the hard question, right? We're, we're now gonna be voting on a budget that doesn't meet our policy on, our thirty-five percent policy, correct? And our capital policy, correct? What's the argument for us to vote aye in favor of this? It's a hard question.
I'm happy to take, sure.
But either, I know it's a hard question, but it's one, you know, that I just-
Yeah, the, the straightforward answer is the board has to approve a budget in order to function as a school district. It does not meet our, our goals of thirty-five percent fund balance policy or a transportation policy. We have some ways to get through that over the next couple of years. But if I were in your shoes, I would want to know, how are we going to get there, right? How are we gonna stair-step this thing? So when we run out of options in a couple of years, which we will, that we are getting there or that we're there. And I can assure you with conversations that we're having at the FAC and what we started, you know, last month with the board in August, that is really, you know, the work that's going to continue ahead. And it's going to have to be with, you know, really creative ways to enhance our revenue, to continue making budget reductions without taking away, you know, what we have to deliver to kids, which is a quality education, and to fairly compensate our staff. And so over the next several months with the FAC is how are we building that ladder up? Where do we see, you know, a combination of reductions? And reductions doesn't always mean staff cuts, although that is our biggest expense. Reductions mean things like I was talking about with transportation providers. If our homeless transportation provider is charging X, what are we going to do to find alternate providers or to squeeze them? And so that's the answer, the, the main answer to your question is we have to approve a budget. But what are the steps we're taking moving forward?
Yeah, exactly. And I think I've said this once before, I wanna see, you know, and thank you for the transparency. And I am voting yes, I don't hate you, because, you know, in my opinion, you have to fund a school district, right? And, and seeing transparency, honesty and forthright like this is encouraging to me to start with. Discouraging, but encouraging. And the other side of this for me is, you know, we, I've said it before, we gotta go take a hard look at vendors, take a hard look at our contracting process, take a hard look at where we're requiring CPI percentages and where we're requiring caps on increasing costs. And really, really get like pencil to paper hard on this because there's a lot of opportunity there to cap vendors also when we, when we have those opportunities. So I don't know where those lie right now, but that would be my encouragement on a go-forward. And I know you'll look at that. You're fresh in that, in that world, you're diving into it. And I trust that you're gonna do the right thing because you were very forthright in a situation. That's not easy to be forthright in, so appreciate it.
Member Ellis, just to give you a, an impact, to answer that same question from somebody who's been sitting on the FAC and a fellow board member, is we absolutely have to pass the budget. And the unfortunate part with a lot of this, right, is this process starts all the way back in January. By April, we're locking in. And as you saw from the slide deck, majority of our costs are, it's definitely, we are a services organization, right? And it's even more so than it looks like because that capital is sort of inflating what that, that component looks like. And so we're locked in contracts and, and all those pieces of it. But twenty-five percent isn't enough. Being below thirty percent means that there is still some very, very serious risks. So one of the things the FAC is doing is gonna continue to find some ways to tweak some costs through the year. But we can't promise those in the, in the budget that's right now. And that's not our work, that's the work of, of Dr. Harris in his office. To say that the FAC, and I think several members on this board, but certainly the people on the FAC as well, have been very frustrated with how we analyzed our, our budgets and those numbers in the past is an understatement. Because we believe, I, looking back at it now, while technically on paper showing some places we looked like we were thirty-five percent, I don't believe that we were. I think we were getting closer to that thirty percent, which is why we were, we were able to, but we also just had other money kind of in our accounts, you know, kind of floating us for a while. That is going to go away as we move forward. So we have to find a stable way to do that. Greg is gonna be working on our five-year plan, which will be officially presented in January. However, what we're, we're talking about is the FAC has moved from being every other month to being monthly. And we wanna look at that progress as we go through so the board can have conversations. So in January, under the new model, and he's, and he's also working on a new version of the year-to-date report, those pieces together can help us manage through, I believe, this budget for this year without having to do anything that feels punitive to our students in any way really cutting services or doing any of those kind of things. Because that really, there's not, as Dr. Russell mentioned, there's not a lot of fluff, you know, in our, in our budget here. So the FAC is gonna be working hard to kinda, to stay on top of it and monitor it. But ninety percent of that work is really gonna reside in the business office. And I know that, that Dr. Russell has committed to, to working right alongside there to make sure that this new model, new design, the new way that we're looking at that budget purely based on a cash basis as opposed to bouncing between cash and accrual, I think is gonna make it cleaner and clearer for all of us on the board, whether or not you do understand school finance or whether or not you're like, this is a foreign language. Because things do work, even the folks on our, our board that spent a lot of years in finance find the way that public finance works to be completely confounding, right? You know, so-
Which is why we have Dr. Harris.
That's, that's why he's here.
That's why he's here. So, I mean, again, appreciate the candor, appreciate the forthrightness, appreciate the clear communication on this. You came into it and, you know, twenty-twenty-six is gonna be funnier for you, so.
It's been a blast so far.
You know, you'll, you'll be engaged, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's for sure.
It's your commute, short.
And, and board member Ellis, I guess, I'd actually encourage you to ask that question when we get to slide twenty-four. I think we're on like slide thirteen or whatever. But like, the, the moving forward steps, I think, are critical for this. Because I think the word of frustration that Darren kind of expressed, I think that's what I would express as one of these seven members. But I think, you know, a lot of this is explaining how we got here. And some of it's not even, it's definitely not within our control. Some of it's not even within our influence, some of it is, you know, transportation being one of them. But I think the moving forward piece is a hundred percent within our control. And so I'm very excited to discuss slides twenty-four and twenty-five. And I'd encourage you to ask that same question.
No, yeah, I, I just, I wanted to make sure that that part, given the budget part, was on record, that we had what we needed to have. But yeah, totally appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Okay, so as indicated in the August meeting, one of the, the top priorities for my department over the last month was to conduct a thorough analysis of our cash flow because we need to know that when we get to May, we're able to pay our bills and pay our teachers. So a little bit of background here, we don't get, you know, if our, if our budget was a hundred and twenty dollars for the year, we don't get ten dollars a month. Ten times twelve, a hundred and twenty. We get basically two big dumps of money every year. And then every other, every other month, we get a little bit of money. So it's because of our, most of our money comes from local property taxes. And most of our local property taxes come in September and in June. And it looks something like this. So we start the year in July, we got a decent amount of money in the bank. And then come hit September, you're at your high cash point. We got twenty-seven point two million dollars deposited into our account on Friday. That's a good day. But they're not, but those days are far, few and far between, unfortunately. And then as we go through the rest of the year, we get some revenue. We'll, we'll get our state payments, our EBF. Every month, we get two paychecks, every, two paychecks from the state every month. We get our, our federal grants coming in here and there, usually on a quarterly basis. We get our mandated categoricals every three months. And there's just money coming in, but they don't, it, it is not as, our expenditures always exceed our revenues month to month. And then by the time you get to May, you're pretty much out of cash. This chart shows us, if you look at May, you see we're right above the line in May. I don't, this is a month-to-month, I don't have a day-to-day cash flow chart. But if I did, there's, there's that, there's that arrow. There's, that's the, that's the part we're worried about there. I was trying to be creative with my animations here. When we get to May, that's where the trouble starts. So May first, we're fine. We got about three million dollars in the banks, in the bank by my calculations. But we also have about a three-million-dollar payroll on May first. So come May second, we're out of cash. We'll get a little bit of money throughout May. Like I said, we'll get two EBF payments, we'll get some of this, we'll get some of that. But we'll have, unfortunately, May, we have three payrolls because we are on a twenty-six pay structure. And two months a year, this year it's in October, and in May, we have three payrolls. So we are going to owe our staff another paycheck on, on May fifteenth. And I haven't asked around yet, but I've heard that they like to get them on time. So the problem with May fifteenth is we don't, at this time, have, believe we have enough money in the bank to meet that obligation. Also, around that time is our board meeting, which, when the board approves accounts payable, and we will not have enough money to make that obligation either. We also have another paycheck coming on May twenty-ninth, and then year into June. We believe, based on past, recent history with, with DuPage County, we believe we'll get a small amount of our, of our tax receipts from the twenty-twenty-five levy coming in right around Memorial Day. This year, we got about eight million dollars right around Memorial Day. And then about the first week of June, we'll get another big dump of cash. So there is a problem about how do you survive May when you have a three-week period there when you have no money in the bank? So that is a problem that we're not, you know, we're not alone in this problem. This is a, a common problem for, for taxing districts, school districts and other governmental entities. So we, we do have some options, but, and, and we've spent some time exploring some of them. The first option is our best option. And this is, this is, somebody's smiling down on us. We're, this is a very fortunate one for us to find ourselves in. This has not happened to everybody who's in this problem. But it has to do with our referendum. And as the board is aware, in, in the early months of twenty-twenty-three, following the twenty-twenty-two successful referendum, the district issued about a hundred and forty million dollars, exactly a hundred and forty million dollars in construction bonds. And those bonds were on a tax-exempt basis. And because they were a tax-exempt basis, arbitrage applies. And arbitrage is, it's a, it's a rule passed on by the federal government that says entities like District Fifty-Eight can't just issue debt in order to gain interest. So we can't just go out and sell a bunch of bonds, put a bunch of money in our, in our money market and watch that grow. We can't do that, we have to have a purpose for it. And so what, what the, I guess the penalty for doing that is when you're, you're, the money, the, you know, every bond has an interest rate on it, let's say the interest rate is three percent. If your bonds are at three percent and you're making five percent interest, you owe the difference to Uncle Sam. You have to cut a check to the IRS for what's called your arbitrage profit. And we've, we are working with PMA. That's who has our, holds all of our investments of the, of the referendum proceeds. And PMA has arbitrage experts that they work with. And they have added up all of our interest that we've made in the, in the, in the last several years from that $140 million bond issuance. And the amount is about $15 million. Sounds great, but approximately $4.8 million of that is our arbitrage profit. And we'll have to cut a check in the amount of, in that amount for our arbitrage rebate to the IRS. The, there, as we understand it, there are two due dates. And it's not which one ever comes first. It's kind of, as, as we understand, it's our preference. But we were gonna continue to talk to people about that once we get some feedback from the FAC and from the board to see if this is the route everyone wants to go down. But the option one is you pay it within 60 days of expending the entirety of the initial $140 million issuance. We believe that's gonna happen this month, actually. So that means under the 60-day deadline, we would owe this $4.8 million to Uncle Sam in November. Option two is within five years of the original issuance, which would mean that we don't have to pay this amount until the five-year anniversary of the date that the board sold the bonds in 2023, which means we could hold on to it until the early months of 2028. We've been, we, we are, we understand that entities like the, the school district just wishes to get the liability off their books and they just pay it. But they're often probably not in the same situation we are, where we could actually put this money to good use. So we are considering using that arbitrage rebate, holding on to it for the next two fiscal years to help us bridge our low cash point in May of 2026 and in May of 2027. This is a stopgap measure. This does not, this is not help us in May of 2028 because the money will already be due and gone. And the cash, the check will be cashed by then. But this is something that will help us get through the next couple of years until we can figure out other ways to grow our fund balances and to, or, and maybe we'll have to issue some debt then, but at least that amount will be smaller.
And I just wanna state, we wouldn't actually spend that money. That money would just be sitting in the account.
Correct.
To cover low cash point. So like it's in the account, you can issue it and then it just, it gets replenished. But it would always be separated out as a separate $4.8 million. It would never be included in our annual budget.
We're not gonna increase next year's budget by $4.8 million. But this is money we're gonna.
It would not be there. It'd be in a, in a separate quote-unquote fund for us to pay back, but it would be sitting in that account to cover a low cash point.
Can I pause there because that was gonna be my question? So it's earmarked, but I wanna make sure I follow that. If we needed it, it would be spent but reimbursed within the next few weeks. So it could potentially be depleted or cut into for a few weeks.
Yes, but we're, you know, think about like we're giving ourselves a loan. We're, we're loaning that money to ourselves. We pay ourselves back when we get our tax receipts in June.
Within days, right? Yeah, so.
Yep.
And we've done loans back and forth to accounts before. In fact, you, you talked about one into transportation. We do that where we cross something into a fund and put it back to cover a, a small gap. We used to do that with our, that's why we couldn't really use our old, what was that?
Sinking fund.
Sinking fund, yeah. We weren't able to ever really use that because it, it ended up covering our low cash point. So this would be one of those things. We cannot use this money. We cannot spend this money, but it can be used like this as sort of a, a cushion point that we can loan against and then give it back within, within days or weeks at the most.
And then the board would obviously make very clear directions to myself and to Dr. Russell. Like, hey, we need to see in the fiscal year 27 and in the fiscal year 28 budgets that that money is still there and that we're not dipping into that, that we are, are, that are, we're still growing our surpluses and growing our fund balances, not doing anything to risk not being able to make that payment. Because the last person we want to cross is the IRS.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, option two. This was our option one until we found about the arbitrage rebate. This is now what we think is our second best option and maybe something we would have to explore in May of 2028. The district has the ability to sell bonds without a referendum. This is, this is done under the district's debt service extension base, AKA our DCEB. And our, think of our DCEB as a dollar amount. Our DCEB is an amount that every year we get to, it's a separate levy. The board is familiar with our operating levy that we pass every year in December. This is a separate levy and it is, it is capped by statute and it grows by CPI. But we can issue a levy upon our taxpayers to pay off the principal and the interest of non-referendum debt. Most of the current board was around when, in 2021, when we sold bonds during DCEB to replace the roof at Pierce Downer. And then we, and also in recent history, we sold bonds during DCEB to add the addition to Lester. And these are, these are two issuances we're still paying off and we're paying off for the next couple of years. This is non-referendum debt. It is, it is not, it, it's not like what we did in 2022. We've, we've consulted with Ray Coyne at Oppenheimer, who is our, our public financing consultant. And he came in with a meeting with us. He said, you guys could do $10 million just fine. We said, that's, we don't need that. We don't think $10 million is what we need. We think $5 million will, will get us there. And he thinks, so he thinks this is easily achievable based on our existing debt and what our DCEB amount is. And so we would be, these are not construction bonds like we did with, with the referendum. These are working cash bonds. It's fund balance stabilization. Where we're selling the bonds, we're putting that money into working cash. And then when we need that money, when we're at our low cash point, it's there. I always like to show this, this, this DCEB chart. So if you look at this very carefully in the blue, those are our Lester bonds. So we're paying those off in 2024, 2025 and 2026. The orange and the gray are our Pierce bonds. And then the, the yellow line across the top is our DCEB. The one thing that this graph doesn't have is the DCEB grows by CPI. And so if you think about it this way, if you look at all the years, which is all of them, but especially in the out years, but even in the early years, we're not hitting DCEB. We do have some room. So you could, in theory, fill up this whole chart here. We don't want to, obviously it's like maxing out the district's credit card. But we do have a lot of opportunities in, in the coming years, especially, you know, 2026, 2027 to fill that up. And that would be the, that would be money that we're levying onto the community in order to, to pay off the principal and the interest on any working cash bonds the district would sell.
And so Melissa, back to your question, that's gonna be one of the things in front of the FAC and one of the things in front of the board over the next two years is, is we believe we have this lifeline with arbitrage. How do we get to that permanent savings? How do we stair-step that over the next two fiscal years? And that's where the board is going to have to weigh in after advisement from the FAC. Is it completely budget reductions? Is it new contracts, as you said? Or is it a combination of perhaps both of these things? And that's the question in front of the board over the next two years is, in terms of reductions, how deep do you wanna go? Or do you wanna have a combination of these two, so to speak?
And when you're talking about those kinds of things, we'll, we'll make recommendations to the board. We don't, I can't even surmise at this point in time and how much we would have to recommend cutting out of the budget in fiscal year 2027 and fiscal year 2028 in order to not, in order to get, in order to make our low cash point in May of 2028, now that the arbitrage rebate is gone. But if we don't cut enough, option number two becomes option number one in 2028. So if we, if we get, if we have two great years and we're able to, you know, our CPRT treats us well and our investment revenue treats us well. We get a couple of lucky breaks with, with MCATs. Maybe our fund balances grow and we don't need, and we, we are able to grow our way out of this. I don't know. But if, the way we look at it is, as of right now, we're looking to grow our fund balance by $5 million. If we don't get there by May of 2028, then working cash bonds becomes something that we're, that, that, that board will have to consider.
And Dr. Harris, the, the issue here, right, is this can't be an option for us on the book, books two years from now. And we can do this, we can issue them. I mean, it's something other districts do to get our fund balanced, to reset that baseline. It doesn't fix our problem though, if we don't then properly fund our fund balance going forward and follow with the 35% fund balance policy in the long trajectory. So part of this still has to be us advocating and fighting with the state to, to stabilize what is going on as, as far as revenue is concerned. Well, we're never gonna recoup the gap. And so this can help us close that gap there. But if we don't know that we can count on revenue coming into this district while our expenses are going up so much, the demand for our services is going up so much, which just is an increase request on, on FTE because we're a service-oriented group. Like we're gonna, this conversation has to be bigger than, okay, we're still short, maybe we don't need to do 5 million, but we need 2.2 million. But I know for a lot of us that sit on the board, like, we don't wanna take those steps that impact our community until we know that we at least got, because we can't just, there's a point that you just, you fill up to that yellow line and there's just nowhere to, there's nowhere to go. And then you have a leak in a roof or whatever, and then you don't even have that to fall back on potentially, right?
One thing that Dr. Russell was telling me is that, you know, obviously he knows a lot of superintendents. There are many districts that just do a $1 million to working cash bond issuance every year. And it's just becomes a cycle. We wouldn't wanna be in that cycle. So to your point, stabilization of our finances is the biggest priority. And then when we, if we do find ourselves in a point where we need to borrow, now it becomes really clear that we need to have ironclad policy, which was our original intention. It just didn't work out as well as we had hoped. But that policy has to protect our fund balances so that when we make, when we make this loan and we saddle our community with debt, this is a one-time thing to get the ship going in the right direction. And then from then on, it's, it's, it's good, honest fiscal conservatism that's gonna lead the district to success. And then we, and make sure that we don't have to repeat these mistakes.
Well, and at the FAC meeting next month, you're gonna be able to come to us with a final answer on the, if arbitrage is, you know, we feel like it's, it, it's within the bounds and, and, and that we still have that timeframe all the way out to the, you know, the early first quarter 28. But, but ultimately we need to decide, and that's calendar year 28, fiscal year?
Both, calendar 28 and fiscal 28.
But when we, when we're saying early 28, we're, we're talking first quarter of calendar year 28 or?
Yes, first quarter. So I, I don't know the exact month that the board issued the, the 2023 bonds. I believe it was March.
Okay.
So I would assume that the, if, if that's true, then they're due March 28th, which means the funds won't be available in May of 28.
So if, if that, that, that gives us a window now to say, that's how we can do this. Try to reduce what the impact is gonna be on and hopefully continue to communicate with the state and get a better understanding of what those numbers look like, to get a real understanding of what we need to budget prioritize as we're writing future budgets and negotiating future contracts, both internally and externally.
Option number three is our least favorite option. And this is something that we've, as a community, we've, has come up a couple of times because this has been the thing we've always been trying to avoid as, avoid as an organization, which is tax anticipation warrants or TAWs. Tax anticipation warrants are basically payday loans. They're short-term, high-cost loans. And there, there are warrants that are issued in anticipation of, of receiving property taxes that have been levied but not yet received. We, we've, we have reached out to Wintrust, which is one of our banking partners, to kind of get some information about like, about TAWs and what the, what that would look like. I have not yet received a, a very thorough answer about, you know, what kind of interest rate do they expect us to be, we'll be paying. I know it's gonna be a high, a high interest rate. I know that there are legal costs associated with that because we need a bond counsel to, to issue, to actually draft the warrants for us. And I would say that this one is the least attractive option for us because all of the money that is required to make the TAWs happen is gonna come out of your operating budget. If you issue the debt certificates, that's all non-operating, that's all debt service, that's a separate levy. But the more, if you're, we're doing the TAWs every year, we're just, we're spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars out of the operating budget every year and you're just making your fund balances shrink by that amount every year. So you're, you're digging yourself a little bit of hole, of a hole. You're not getting, you're not getting ahead. And it's just, it's not an option that's gonna help us right the ship. So this would be, this would be, at the end of the day, the, the option that we would say would be the last resort for the Board of Education to consider. Before I get to Steve's favorite slides, about those three options and anything about cash flow would be, this would be a good time to pause for a moment.
And I'll just tell you that it'll, it'll save a minute in my FAC review in that we went over the slide deck in that meeting. And we're obviously putting, the FAC felt that the same order that, that Greg presented here today is the same order that we would consider them in, starting with arbitrage, looking at DCEB and obviously tax anticipation warrants being our last. But their homework was to kind of come back and now make sure that all of those things would, would work the way that we're anticipating and that, that, that it's within the bounds of how we can use those funds and when, when the arbitrages actually do. So when we come to our next meeting, we are going to have a second FAC meeting now. And we will have a meeting before that, our next board meeting. And so we'll have an opportunity to make, to give you feedback on, on exactly where we're at on, on some of those final answers as well as I'm assuming also in the next few weeks, we'll probably get some stuff in our, in our updates as well.
So moving forward, when the board and the community is, is made to understand for a long time that our fiscal picture is a certain way. And then mere months later, we're kind of telling a different story. We understand there's gonna be a lot of questions. We understand that there's gonna be some consternation about that. We understand there's, there's some frustration. And so we, we need to fix that as, as administration. We need to do the hard work and the heavy lifting in order to, you know, as, as a new CSBO, I have to earn my credibility. I have to earn the trust of the board and the community. So there's a lot of work in order to make sure that we're, we're sailing again in the right direction. And when we say we're on the right path, this time we mean it for sure. And, and this is not gonna be something that we're gonna come back to a couple of years from now and say, no, no, actually we were off by a few percentage points or 10 percentage points or whatever. Like we're, we're heading, we're heading towards a new policy. We're gonna hit it and this is how we're gonna hit it. We, we need to have, we need to be able to tell that story. We need to give our community reason to have faith in us. So we have our, we have our plan. We have our, our marching orders from the FAC and from various conversations with board members. And these are the things that, that are the biggest priorities in my department, the things that we need to accomplish in order to make, like I said, make sure we're heading in the right direction. So we're overhauling our year-to-date reports in order to provide just a more accurate picture. One of the things that we talk about like, and I'm, I'm gonna try, I don't wanna get too confusing. But I said, when we're talking about fund balances, we were looking at them on an accrual basis, but it makes more sense to look at them on a cash basis because we're concerned about our cash flow. On our year-to-date reports, we, we wanna make sure that the, the picture there is as accurate as it can be as well. So that when you look at the July report or the August report, you have a good sense of, of where we are, how much we've spent so far and, and how we compare to prior fiscal years. So we're, we're revamping that. We've, we've completed it. We've, we have a new, a, a new look to it. It's not terribly different, but the way we're doing it is we're trying, this is actually, like as Wes said, this is gonna get a little confusing. It's actually a little bit more on an accrual basis. Because when we, we've gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe over a million dollars in federal revenue in July and August from our, our title grants, our idea grants, Medicaid, that's all fiscal year 25 money. So we're not putting that in the 26 report. Everything's gonna be clean. And so when you look at it, this, like, that's gonna help you understand an apples-to-apples comparison. We're looking at the two fiscal years in the same way. And that's gonna help us on an ongoing basis, not just this year, but as, the more years I get under my belt, we're gonna be all looking at the same thing in the same way. The cash flow projection is completed. It's something that's gonna be updated on a monthly basis with new assumptions. If we get, if, if our, some of our revenue comes in more than anticipated, that's gonna, that's gonna help us out. If our expenditures are, are able to be controlled, that's gonna be something that we're gonna be reporting back to the month, every month to the board so that you can see how, how we're progressing towards our, our goal of at least hitting the May 1st payroll and having some cash left over. We are gonna be providing more updates to the board. Member Hughes talked about how we're gonna have more FAC meetings so we can get more feedback. And we have, and we're going to have more, more opportunities for accountability. We're going to be not only just giving you the, the, the typical investor, investment and treasury reports and at the board meetings, we're also going to be giving kind of mid, mid-month updates. We talk about things like, like cash flow, for example. Okay, so now, now that the board meeting's over, now I have some time to focus on this. I'll be, I'll be spending the next couple of days crunching cash flow with, with all of our, our August data. And I can tell you how we are looking so far another, another month in. We are, the board is used to receiving a five-year projection every winter. We're going to be working on that as a department in the month of November. And then presenting that to the board and to the FAC in the month of December. And then that's just, that's gonna be a lot of numbers in December. And then when we get to the, the January meetings, we'll have a financial workshop. We'll start talking about the implications of, of the We'll start talking about the implications of, of the results of the five-year projection model. And this, of course, will be an annual process that we'll go through. We still think that there's value in the 35% fund balance policy. To, to your question, member Ellis, we know we're not going to hit this year, but that doesn't mean we're going to throw it out, we're not going to throw it out to be with the bathwater. We have to figure out a way to get there, and it's going to be a multi-year project. It's going to take several years in order to build our fund balances up by approximately $9 million to get to the 35%. We think, you know, if we had 31% to 32%, we would have the opportunity to make our, our low cash point. But then we don't have any kind of buffer in case something, something happens, a roof collapses or, you know, something unforeseen. So we want, we still think 35% is a good policy. We just need to work with the FAC to draft, to, to refine that policy in order to make it work within the existing paradigm. And then we will, we'll continue to report on that and, and update the board on, on all of our policies. We will come back to the board this fall, in November, at the, at the latest, to discuss our, our, any other conclusions we've drawn, or any other things we've found out about our cash flow. If we can't do the, the arbitrage rebate solution because our bond council is advising against us, or we reach some, we reach an attorney at the, in our general council who says, maybe should, maybe do this instead, we'll update the board, but then, because there's plenty of time, if we need to consider option two, the working cash bonds, we'll have plenty of time to do that. And then budget reduction conversations that will stem from the five-year plan that the board will, will see for the first time in December. And that will be a part of a, a larger conversation with the financial January workshop. The January workshop, financial workshop in January. Okay, that's it for my presentation. Any other questions or discussion topics?
Do have one here. The one I have here is on the priorities, when, when and if there's, you know, a financial boon next year somehow.
A financial what?
Boon, savings, if we find savings.
Sure.
Yeah, so, you know, progress toward priorities, priorities being, first, the fund. Is that the, like, what's the, do we get a report out on what those are? Is it to get to 35%? Is it to get the capital set aside? Is it to, you know, look at where we're, where we've made budget cuts to educational, recent thing? What are we prioritizing? Are we going to, are we going to talk about that in the next few months?
The biggest priority you have right now is to navigate the low cash point in that. Right, that, that's obvious. But then, how do we get to that number around 30, 31% in terms of having enough in savings where you don't have to leverage arbitrage or, or DCEB? Once we get to that, the next priority is how do we continue to shift money into the capital account? Because, as we know, just from the last couple of weekends, you know, even though we, we fixed a lot of our buildings through the referendum, which we're grateful for, there are still our issues, right? And so we still have to keep dedicating money to capital. And then eventually, the last priority is to get all the way up to that 35%. And so when we talk about the priorities that we're trying to hit, it's in that order. And then how do we stair-step our, our way there? That's why that January workshop is so important because if you're going to make any budget reductions, you have to have that game plan in January so that you can move forward. That will also give us time by November to get the full audit back, to know all the accruals and all of that, because that's when that comes back from our auditors. And so by that point, we'll have a clearer picture of everything and how we can build those steps.
I, I also want to say that one of the things I, the FAC will not leave hanging is, we do not want this board to be not in compliance with policy. So I think that sets a precedent for future boards, that policy that the board sets for itself doesn't matter. This came up as a little bit of a surprise, and getting those numbers in order, and then putting that step in what we should do to temporarily adjust our fund balance policy, whether that is a step trajectory that we can put us on over the next couple of years, or whether we have to, to vote to set it aside for a period of time. We're going to come up with some options that I'm going to bring to the next board meeting so that we have an opportunity to, and that'll, that'll be in line with what those priorities are. So if we have to get to 31% to be able to function, but that gives us no, no cushion. And we need to get to 30, so we can get to 31% if, if we want to get there for, the recommendation is to get there for two years, start fixing some of the other things, and inch up to the 35. Whatever those come out at, out of the business office, and then we have a conversation at FAC, we'll bring that to the full board to have a dialogue around it, and then lock that into place so that we get into compliance before the end of this calendar year with policy when it comes to our finances. So we weren't ready at this point, prior to having this conversation with the full board, to do that. And the business office wasn't ready to give us some of those projections yet, but that's what we're going to need to do so that we stay in line with our, our policies as a district. Because right now, our policy says that we should be putting a certain amount of money into our capital fund, and we should be holding a certain amount in our fund balance policy, and we are not in line with that. Now that this new budget got adjusted, and we actually looked at the real numbers that came out of last fiscal year, when they got, Betsy got them the final numbers, you know, over there from Miller Cooper, and looked at the actual cash on hand. So that, that is going to be a priority out of that, their office. It's a priority that we've set to them, and then we, we'll start writing a policy, hopefully, is, or, get some options together, you know, for us as we walk into the October meeting.
First of all, thank you. Huge, huge amount of work, not, not easy work either. But when I look at this, right, you're, you're in fighting fire mode, right? Dealing with the current and the priorities are near term. My biggest concern is, how do we make sure that we also, at the same time or two earlier points raised, think ahead long enough terms? So just remind me, Greg, when we talk about overhauling the projection, projection model, and looking at budget reductions, revenue enhancements in the January workshop, how far out are we looking? And how can we help make sure that we think beyond just the near term, which yes, are the priorities, but long enough terms so that we're not getting there in January and making conversations and decisions just, again, in the interim for one year out, knowing that we need to make tougher conversations about the longer term?
By the time you get to January, I mean, you'll already know what your, your levy looks like. And we'll have, we, we know that there's, a lot of our costs are already able to be calculated for next year. I mean, our collective bargaining agreement with the DG EEA is our biggest cost. We know that's, that's, we have another year on the life of that contract, so we know that that's all locked in. We'll have a lot of pieces in place, not all of them, for fiscal year 2027. But on the revenue and the expenditure side, we're going to have a lot of information already by then. There's a lot of guessing, it still goes on in, in January, but we'll have some good ideas. So we'll have, we'll have some short-term information that's going to help us inform what that budget's going to look like. But then we're using a lot of assumptions in, in a five-year model to, to look at the, the four years after that, the '28, '29, '30, '31. I think our goal is to, you know, we're looking at a lot of things. And we're, but we're, you know, going that far out, you're making a lot of guesses, I guess, because we don't know, like I said, we're negotiating the DG EEA contract in 2028, 2027. So that, that's, there's, there's a lot of guessing around that. Healthcare, you know, in terms of how that, what that's looking in the, in the contract, but also at the macroeconomic level, how that's going to affect us. So, you know, when you look at the five-year model, a lot of it is, you know, that's, that's what, working with the FAC to connect, to get their points of view and, and how to build that, and what kind of data to put into that. But that gives us at least a good glance. And it's the one, I mean, but we have to just continue to update it every year because the longer you go out, the less reliable it is. So it's just, it's, it's, I think the important part about that process is it just has to be an annual occurrence. And the board, the board has been, has gotten used to that, and, and we look at that every year in order to make sure that, that, that piece, that, that, that product drives a lot of our decision ma, decision-making at an administrative level. You know, when we are negotiating with any of our labor groups, we are using that as, as our, as our North Star. Like, we know what we can afford based on what we think our revenues are going to be, and what we think our revenue, our expenditures need to come in at. And that's, that's how we're going to use that. But that's, you know, that's, so that, that's the goal of that process. I'm not sure I'm 100% answering your question, so if I'm missing something, let me know.
No, you are, and then maybe follow on to that. The biggest drivers of what you're informing us, really at the January financial workshop and potential decisions, is that, those projections. So it sounds like we'll foresee them December, FACs on top of it. Just one thing to maybe consider is, given the amount of adjustments that you're working through and, and your terms overhaul, right, to the different models, perhaps iterative review over some of those big drivers might help just give an advanced preview of what might be forthcoming versus like a December, January, back-to-back meeting prep on that front.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a tactical question than a broader question for us. We, we say that we won't hit our fund balance policy. What, what is the percentage we will hit?
25.4.
25.4? With a 2028 cliff coming, we have, in short, tough decisions to make over the course of two years. And a lot of our expenses are spoken for. And so I, as, having been on the board for six years, I, I don't see a line of sight to us being able to make cuts around the edges, to be able to hit a $9 million gap that we currently face to meet our fund balance policy.
Sure, not to mention the 750.
Not to mention the capital fund of 750. What, what I, what I think this, in this, I, I appreciate the presentation on its clarity. What I think it misses is option one, option two, and option three, even if we pick one of them, are insufficient. Option one needs to be paired with some significant cuts as a school district. Option two needs to be paired with some significant cuts as a school district. Or option three needs to be paired with, so on and so forth. And so as a school district, I don't think we've, at least in the near, near, or recent history, as long as I've been on the board, we have not faced that type of a decision as a district and as a community on the types of cuts we're going to be talking about to get to a $9 million gap. And so business as usual for how we talk about our finances, and how do we talk about which workshops we'll use to, those won't work either. Though, this is unprecedented, unprecedented time. And I do think we should be thinking about, how do we bring the community along on some really tough decisions over the next 24 months? Because if we had five years, you can spread it out over five years, but we don't. We have two years to make some significant shifts in how we spend money. And a big portion of our expenses are spoken for because of our contracts. And so there's going to have to be some very meaningful things put on the table. And I know, Dr. Russell, Dr. Harris, you all are thinking about those in your head. And we, as a board, need to be discussing them in front of the community to have those tough conversations. So they don't feel like, well, let's just issue a $5 million working cash bond because that will only be temporary. It won't have forced us to make some of the $9 million cuts we have to make to be on stable footing into the foreseeable future. That $5 million is just a credit card. And so I'd love for us to think about how we're structuring our spaces at each board meeting, where we're talking about boundaries, where we're talking about school buildings, where we're talking about the third rail topics that nobody ever wants to talk about. Because those are the kind of things that get you to $9 million. I don't see any other way around it. And as, as one of seven, I feel like we have to have these difficult conversations that aren't business as usual. I can't wait until December or January to talk about the things that we might have to make decisions on before next April because we have contracts that require us to say, if we're going to be bringing, be bringing back a certain number of teachers, those decisions have to be made 45 days prior to the end of the calendar year. We don't give our community enough time to digest, ask questions, us as a board to do the same. And if we, if we wait one more month, we only have 23 months to do that. If we wait one more month past that, we have 22. And every time, we lose the, we lose the runway. And so us as a board, I advocate for us having a different calendar, a different plan for how we engage in these conversations, to start to put those third rail topics on our agendas as discussion topics. So tactically, what I'd ask for is, Dr. Russell, Dr. Harris, for you to tell us which categories of, and member, Nicole mentioned it really well. Give us the categories of things that we will have to cut from to meet $9 million so we can start to discuss that and prioritize as a board. There's just no other way we get there through renegotiating a transportation contract or hoping the state comes through with some additional transportation funding. It's been three years, they will, they, they likely won't come through with it. The county board likely won't come through with it. I hope they do. But even if they did, that wouldn't get us to $9 million. And so I, I'd love to see which categories we would have to cut from so that we can make some tough choices as a board, but we have the runway. And honestly, we are, we're transparent with the community on that runway as well, so it doesn't feel like a last-minute decision that they weren't given a preview for.
Just one sort of more of a comment really than anything else, and this is kind of like a very big-picture, 50,000-foot-view comment, far beyond this room or this town or whatever. But to Karat's point, it, it doesn't seem like this, this financial budgeting problem is going to go away with anything that we can really do in this room. We have a lean, we run a lean district, as Dr. Russell said, and, and there's not, there's only so much we can continue to cut until it really starts to hurt, like, a lot, right? Like you mentioned, having some of these, like, conversations that nobody ever wants to have, and things that are going to really hurt the community, hurt our kids' education, all of those things. And so I think, as a community, I would just, I guess, sort of encourage people to think about, what can we do? So much of this is being directed to us, at us. We only, we receive funding, we receive prorated rates that have diminished over time. We, we only have so much to go in terms of raising the tax, tax rates. And like Darren said, no one likes to pay taxes, we want to maintain low tax rates and all those things. But we also want to provide, and everyone in the community wants to provide a level of education that we all think our kids deserve, and that costs money. And so perhaps we need to think about, or encourage, or find more ways to advocate to the people who actually are making these decisions that now get passed down to us that say, you have to do this, you have to pay for this, we're only going to give you this much money, we're only going to let you raise taxes by X percent, and so on and so forth. Do we need to look for other ways, or advocate harder, or find more ways to speak and advocate to say, education funding is important, it should be a priority? We should be making it something that we value more as a society as a whole? Do we need to try to encourage a shift in the way, how do we fund education? I just think these are larger questions that I would just encourage people to think about because the decisions we make here, I don't even think are going to be able to solve this problem. These are things that are going to have to be looked at at a much larger scale to really impact. We're not the only district that is going to face these problems. And ours might be even less than a lot of others, other people might be facing it even more so than we are. So as a society and as a community, think about what can you do to advocate and push for a new way of looking at this, or a better way, or prioritizing it in a different way in Springfield, in Washington DC, whatever the case may be, so that we can get our kids what they deserve?
Well said. You know, I think that at some point here, DuPage County has to be heard, you know, and, and I know you were talking about, there, there's finally some rumbling that you're hearing, you know, with Lenden. I'm not saying that that's the answer, but, you know, it certainly has to be something. We have our legislative breakfast, I think we, I think we very much have our topics that we, that we're going to be, that we're going to be talking about. You know, I think we've heard over and over again, it's okay, you're an affluent district, it's okay. Well, you know, it, it's now hit a, hit a point that, that's critical. So to Kirat's point, there, there are going to be some hard conversations. Therefore, I know you're still in a little bit of triage and, and building this, but we do need to know. And there's a difference, right, in closing the gap in $9 million, you know, if we, if we seed something with a few million dollars, you know, through DCEB or whatever, and that just fills in and closes the gap, and they, going forward, our funding stabilizes, that's different than if our funding continues a downward trend because we can't make up that gap then, it's, it's a continual moving target. And so, you know, right now, I think, what, what scares me the most is I don't know, you know, I don't know if, if there's a way to get some bonds out there, cut some things, live leaner for a few years, catch up, and then, and stabilize, or if this is an, an ongoing battle. At, at some point, it's all going to blow up, and we're going to have to have a larger conversation, to your point. Like, it, it, it's getting, this is the most Like it, it, it's getting, this is the most unsustainable, it's felt, in my term, sitting on the board. And when I first got here, some of these slides, talking about the tax anticipation warrants were up there. And we felt like we got over that hump. We had, we had some things on our horizon that we just had to get to, like the TIF falling off and stuff that was supposed to save us. And we got there and that sort of, but now we have a new, new problem on our horizon. So thanks for all the comments here. Anything else before I open up the hearing?
I guess I just want to say one thing I, you know, agree with what everyone said. But I think the one thing that we do control within the administration and the board is our forecasting models and how accurate and reliable they are. And so I, you know, I encourage each of the seven of us to continue to ask, you know, what, how accurate and reliable do we think these models are? Because I think this is kind of, you know, a triage moment where we're recognizing that previous models weren't as accurate and reliable as we wanted them to be. So I think that's the reality. And so whether it's nine million, eight million or whatever, we need to have more confidence as to what we're, what gap we're trying to close. So I think that's something that's fully within our control. I think we beat this one.
Yeah. All right. Then at this time, I'd like to declare this hearing open to allow members of the audience to comment specifically on this topic. Anyone wishing to be heard, please stand up, state your name, attendance area, or any organization that you're a part of, you know, for the record. Okay. If there are no comments on this topic, and now declare the hearing closed at 8:32. All right. Listed on tonight's agenda are seven communications received by the board. Are there any additional communication the board member would like to share at this time? Okay, then we will go up to our first report, which is a staffing update. Mr. Sissel, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will, we will hear the annual update that we give at the September board meeting on enrollment and staffing as we have begun the school year. Typically, we're a little further in, but in, in day five, our numbers are solid. And so we're able to, to talk through all of those things. This slide has not changed much in over a decade in terms of our general priorities for what we try to do each year. I think that consistency is important to consider as we talk about these topics. I also think that, that second bullet about keeping students in their home schools as much as possible is also very relevant. It wasn't so long ago that we were capping enrollment at certain schools for a variety of reasons and simply sending students to another identified school, sometimes because of space issues, sometimes because of other things. And we've moved away from practices like that, though we do still occasionally find a family who, when class size is their immediate priority, there can be an opportunity to move to another school within our district that allows for that need to be met. This slide actually goes back to a presentation in 2019 when the Resources Review Council that came out of our first or most, or our previous strategic plan, identified staffing targets for by grade level. And this is what we have really worked through. The way the committee approached this was to recognize ranges and to recognize that we are operating in a neighborhood school model. And so absolute consistency year over year is really difficult to achieve. And so there are a number of steps that have to be considered and taken as we look at the enrollment in each grade level, each section across the district. And this is what guides that practice. This is just an overview of the entire enrollment in the district. We are really, over the past five years, our numbers overall have stayed pretty consistent, not only at the overall total enrollment level, but across programs as well. What shifts is more what's visible in the next slide, which is when we look at our totals by building. So this slide focuses on K six enrollment at the, as of the beginning of the school year. I think the, the row that is most relevant and speaks most to our model is the third row where we look at the range within each school in District 58. This is what we live with each year because of the neighborhood school model that we have. If we had grade level centers, if we had a couple of grade level centers across the district, those average sizes across the district would look a lot more like what the average sizes look like within buildings and be even closer and more compressed. But the reality is that when you look at the ranges, each school almost, almost each school has somewhere in the low teens and almost each school has somewhere in the mid to high twenties. And that is just, again, the reality of what we look at. So there are different ways to approach all of this. And the average class size is one, range of class size is another, staffing targets is a third. And, and all of that speaks to the variety of things that we will see. At the bottom there, you'll see that this year in grades K through six, 87% of our classes across the district do meet the class size targets that have been established, which is, which is good news. That's really, that is consistent with what we've seen. Even with some identified budgetary reductions in staffing going into the school year, we were still able to maintain this particularly in grades K through six. Now, that still doesn't make it feel any better when you're in one of those 13%. And that is the reality of being in the model that we're in, and we have to acknowledge that experience. It is different to be in a class of 14 or 15 or 16 than it is to be in a class of 26 or 27 or 28. But we have had the experiences where we have seen classes of 26, 27, 28, even 29 achieve success and be successful with the right supports and with the right consistent approach. This slide shows us what it looks like across the district. The sections highlighted in blue are the sections that are over class size targets at the given grade level. At this point, while at the elementary level, while we have a number of classes that are slightly over the target or a couple of students over the target, there are truly only, there's one grade level in one building where we have reached that action number in grades K through six, and that is kindergarten at Kingsley. We have, the 28th students at Kingsley in kindergarten registered on August 20th and 26th respectively. And we posted for an instructional assistant. I'm excited to say that as of Friday afternoon, we did permanently fill that position with an experienced, actually a certified teacher who's working with us as an instructional assistant, who will be with us for the remainder of the school year as a, as an action step based on what we observed in those numbers. But again, as you can see how this looks across the district, there are some schools that have one or two grade levels over the target. There are some that have none in a given year. The grade levels range and change. I think the other thing that we acknowledge is that because a class is over the target in one year or because a class is well under the target in a given year, that doesn't mean that that is their destiny in District 58 in either direction. We have seen classes combine, we have seen classes expand based both on actual enrollment and on some individual student needs. For example, in schools where we have specialized programs, those students in the specialized programs are considered based upon the amount of time they are spending in the general education environment as it relates to their individual IEPs. Typically, that amount of time increases as the students age. And so where you might see less of a consideration in terms of the impact on general education class size in the primary grades from specialized program students, you would typically see more of an impact on that consideration with specialized program students in the older grades as the goal is that they are included more into the general education environment as they age. This slide speaks to those specialized program students and really just is, I won't spend too much time on this, but the information is there every year to give the board and the community a breakdown of where those students are enrolled and what those class configurations look like.
Justin, can you maybe just talk about dual language? It's fairly new.
Sure.
Kind of, what have we learned? You know, what concerns do we have moving forward?
So we are in now our fourth year of a two-way program. So you'll notice that's where those numbers kind of shift. So kindergarten, one first grade, second grade, third grade are in a two-way dual language program where we have native Spanish speaking students or students whose families speak Spanish primarily, along with native English speaking students. And so that has caused those numbers to increase over time. For example, that kindergarten class is over the target, but we actually, in a dual language program, are very comfortable starting a little higher in kindergarten because students aren't typically able to join that program as they age. Once you're in about, once you're in second grade for sure, it's very difficult to assimilate into that environment. I think, you know, we've seen classes that are consistently within range in District 58. So that's, that's very encouraging. And that's why you see in fourth through eighth grade, that is still, those are the last years of our one-way program. So that, you know, the numbers are half or less in those grade levels because of those students simply only beginning in kindergarten or first grade as students who's, were eligible for EL services and had that native language of Spanish. And so those, you know, those numbers, if those students moved out of the district, there typically weren't students coming into the programs at those grade levels. But, you know, I won't speak too far into the, the curricular sides and all of that. But from a, from a sustainable standpoint, I think we've now seen four years where, you know, we're not, we're seeing enough retention in that program that it's continuing to be vital. You know, one of the things when you start a new program is, will students stick with it? Will, will they choose to stay as part of it? And I think we're, our evidence is, is generally speaking, yes, as those numbers continue to stay steady. Yep. This slide looks at middle school enrollment. And here, we need to acknowledge that we are a little bit below our district staffing targets in terms of classes. But again, in middle school, when we talk about classes, we're talking about one individual class during one individual period. So while many middle school students are likely enrolled in a couple of classes that might exceed the target, I would venture to say very few middle school students are going to spend their entire day in classes that exceed the target. And that really has to do with the staffing configuration and what we do. As we, as we looked at this, you know, we did, based on some of our budgetary conversations in, in the winter and spring, we looked at targeting middle school class sizes between averaging between 24 and 20, maybe 23 in some cases in 26 as we were looking to staff at that point in time. There were some move-ins between 25 and 30 at each building, which does have an, I mean, just that many students can have an impact on that. And then it also comes down to the actual building of the schedule and looking at specialized classes, teaching specific schedules, where exploratory classes fall. How many classes are there for seventh grade students during each period? And sometimes there are just things that cause us to not be able to move kids around as freely as we would like, even with the economy of scale of having 300 plus seventh graders at Herrick and, and, you know, 200 plus at O'Neill. So we do have some classes that are above 29. We have, I did go ahead and put it on there, out of 327 sections, about just, just almost 4% of them are at 30 or over. Nothing is over 32, and that number is very small. Now, that, that is beyond what we would typically like to see. Fortunately, we have built and designed space that can accommodate that. So we're not dealing with a busting at the seams overcrowding scenario necessarily. But we do need to get feedback from teaching staff. You know, the kinds of support you offer for a middle school science class that is at 29 or 30 students is going to probably look a little different than the kinds of support you would immediately offer for a first or second grade class. And so we want to make sure that we are getting input as to what, what does need to happen to make sure that everyone is feeling confident in, in this experience. This slide we keep consistently too. This, this is a number that has not changed this year. The FTE of our support positions for students across the district maintain, we maintain that at what I would say is a pretty, a pretty high level in order to make sure that regardless of class size or regardless of configuration, there is support available in each building for our students should they need those things. And then finally, just to look at summary again, the majority, it is true, the majority of our classrooms are below class size targets. I'm excited to be able to say that we are fully staffed in both certified positions and instructional assistants for the first time in many years at this point in the year. So that is really a nice benchmark to be able to have hit and then say that there are, you know, all of the permanent positions that we have are open, recognizing as, as that we did do a little bit of reconfiguration based on some roles that were challenging to fill, but we have not reduced the certified FTE in those cases. Communication is on track to occur. Every elementary classroom that is over the target, those families will receive a letter tomorrow or Wednesday and for just sharing that that is, that is the case and this is the way we approach it. These are our staffing targets and we're making communication. And at middle school, we're working on that to coincide with curriculum nights, which happen at the middle school the following week. We really do continue to monitor all of this. You know, this isn't the last time we'll talk about this internally or publicly if we need to. And I think the other thing that's, that's worth noting is that recognizing when student situations require additional support is something we do every year in every class and every building, regardless of class size. In that case, class size isn't really even the only driver of do we need to be funneling some extra supports to a situation? In the past couple of years, we've had examples of some higher class sizes where additional support was added. We've had some examples of classes of 20 where based on individual student needs that were demonstrated, we did add some additional supports in a variety of ways to make sure that as we got to know those individual groups and we looked at all of that, the student needs were being met throughout the year. And so, you know, while there are budgetary realities, while there are timing realities, we have been able to secure that additional staff support over the course of the year as it becomes apparent and necessary, once we see what that configuration of students look like. Because as I've shared, we have had, we've seen classes of 25, 26, 27, 28 have great success. We've seen classes of 27, 26, 25, 24 need additional support mid-year. And, and we've been responsive to those cases as they've occurred. That takes me to the, I want to, I want to thank Dr. Harris. I'm usually not the brief one. So that brings me to the end of this evening's presentation. If there are any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you so much, Justin. Questions or comments?
Thank you. I, I actually have a question on middle school. So when I see like 61%, that's concerning. When I see 67% average, you know, calculating that out, it's like 108 class sections that are 27 or above, right? But what I don't, what I don't have is what classes, right? Are we looking at math? Are we looking at ELA? Are we looking at gym classes? It matters, I think, when we're talking about which sections, right? Because when we look at data, Herrick and O'Neill, they're, they're not meeting their school targets on testing. So if we're reducing, if we're increasing class size, are we giving them better chances to do better in those? I don't have the distribution here of how many of these are, you know, art? And how many of them are math? Both very important, but different impacts on the academic experience, right?
The foreign music teacher in me thanks you for that. I don't, I won't try, I won't try to riff on that, but I can certainly provide the specific breakdown. What I can, what I can tell you is the vast majority are 27, 28 and not 31, 32. So again, not that that, any, you know, we have targets for a reason. But in terms of the number of sections that actually bring us to that actionable support level, that is definitely less than half and probably closer to a third. But I, I could, but I can certainly provide the board with a more specific breakdown.
Yeah. Because I looked back like 24, 23, 22, our enrollments, you know, the lowest we had in those years was like 70% at Herrick and 89% that year at, at O'Neill. And so this is the lowest we've had in quite some time. And so that's to me just, my eye is on it.
And, and I appreciate that and, and candid, and frankly, that is the result of some of the conversations we were having in January and February about looking at a reduction in middle school FTE and actually looking at a greater reduction in middle school FTE than we did in the elementary buildings to accomplish some of those targets. So it is, it is the outgrowth of that. Did it go a little further in terms of the, above the target number than we were hoping when we projected based on average class sizes? It, it did. I'll, I'll acknowledge that too. But so, so yes, this is our year to both look at, you know, what can we do differently with scheduling in the future? We have a great advantage next year in that we're, we're building an entirely new schedule model for six, seven, eight. And so there will be even, even more economy of scale there to try to, to spread that out a little bit. But, but also to, to recognize this is, this will be, again, it is, it's a different experience. It is different to have 29 students in a room than it is to have 20 students in a room. So we'll, we'll want to, to your point, we'll want to make sure we are continuing to monitor all of that.
Yeah. Because I also looked at like the total enrollment for, you know, I was like, okay, because does it matter? You know, that 70% in 22 was, there's 655 people at Herrick, 430 at O'Neill. You know, we were at 70 and 89%. This is 645, so comparable, right? When we, when we went way up in 23 and decent in 24, we met our targets in 24. You know, those numbers, you know, 618, you know, at Herrick, 437 and 400 at, at O'Neill. So like when enrollment dips, obviously we get a better percentage. But, you know, this isn't, these aren't like obscene enrollment numbers. They're not, you know, totally out of our normal realm. So 61%, 67% over across the board. That's a, that, that one hit me a little bit. Just more detail on which kind of classes they are would be helpful.
Happy to provide that.
I think to tag on that, you asked the same area where I was concerned looking at it. I think knowing sixth grade is moving in there and there's, right, the schedule change is coming. I think more detail now that we can then use in the conversations earlier in the spring will really help us understand the impact of the decisions being made with the amount of students coming into that model as well.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the amount of transparency and clarity when we're looking at, not all districts will put up how many kids are in each building and each classroom. And I appreciate in your presentation of it, of talking about how that is a number. It depends very much on the students that are within that classroom of what the needs are, that that number is a fluid number depending on the special programming that is. So you could have an additional six children in that room at some point. The neighborhood schools versus the grade level schools, I think is an important, we've tossed that around a couple of times tonight when we were talking about budgets and it comes back when you're talking about class sizes. So just for transparency sake, a neighborhood school, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, is based on geography. So you're going to have all of those grade levels K through six, and it's based on where you live and boundaries versus a grade level Versus a grade level center, which is also used in some school districts, is K through 1st grade is at a number of buildings or a building, and then 2, 3. And I only mention that because it all kind of comes back to what many people have talked about tonight, but building upon what member, Dorsey had said, is we do have to put all of those conversations out in public, and the more that we can have them with saying, you know, the pros and the cons of the different usage of the buildings, what's going to happen with something like dual language and running out of potentially space at one as that building grows. I just think that it does our community a disservice if we're not having those conversations more frequently, especially when we're looking for something like $9 million. I would say the things I hear most passionately in the community are class size and neighborhood school model.
Right.
But they don't pair very well together in terms of...
Well, they do in many years and many grades, but then they don't in a few in different places. And I, please let me be clear that I am not advocating a position. Our community has spoken loudly and clearly through many strategic plans that Downers Grove values its community schools. But the comparison, when you look at other districts and why can they accomplish such consistent average classes, does have a lot to do with configuration and what you can do with that economy scale.
Justin, I have a question. I know that we expected the class sizes at our middle schools to go up. If you can bring us maybe behind the curtain a bit on why it's, why the variance might have surprised us when this presentation is coming together on how class sizes may have bled further than we had hoped. It's, I'm guessing it's not as simple as a, we have X number of FTEs and we know the number of FTEs that we budgeted for. We can expect the enrollment to be somewhere within a matter of 3 to 5%. Is it, it's not just a simple math problem, divide X by Y and get us to a number? Help me understand why that is.
I think the difference is it begins at a higher level, a little closer to what you just described. When we are looking in April and May, we're looking at projected numbers overall. In math classes, for example, we have data to say, well, we know this many students will be in math 8, this many students will be in math 7, you know, and those kinds of things. So we do sort of begin by saying, okay, there are, we're projecting 300 7th graders, we have all of, you know, most of them are taking science, the vast majority of them, what's 300 divided by 25? And then that many period, class periods are designated for 7th grade science. And so that is where it begins to some degree. The challenge comes in that the actual building of the schedules happens right as we leave for the summer, and then the fine tuning of that really is in August as we've been able to roll over all of our systems. We continue to work to do it earlier and earlier, but that is part of it. And so what happens is it isn't just, I mean, if you look at the average class sizes, they're right around what we projected with FTE. That's not our, that's not our target, I understand that. But that, you know, but the average class size is what we were projecting as we were saying, okay, there are 300 7th graders, they all need science, that means this many class periods will get us to an average of 24 or 25. When you start doing the actual scheduling, though, there are just a lot of competing priorities. If that student is also, or I mean, I guess if I'm in 8th grade, if that student is also taking French and math 2, now I've locked into, there are only two periods worth of students taking math 2 and one period worth of students taking French. And so I have now taken away a number of scheduling options for any student that fits that profile. If I have a student who is in, who is in a special education classroom that needs to meet a specific period, I've now taken that out of the ability to make some of those things happen. And so, you know, and so while we see there are classes above the target, there are also a number of classes that by design run well below the target as well. And so it really comes down to the specificity of having to fit 318 students into those scheduling parameters. And so, you know, there are, in many of the subject areas, you will see one class of 28 and one class of 23, and that just has to do with the complexity of scheduling. So that is, that is a lot of what happens. And it is something that we can work at in a number of ways. You know, there are ways you can design schedules for teachers that are more supportive with common plan time and things like that. If you do common plan time, if both of my 7th grade social studies have a planned period second period, now I have no 7th grade social studies second period. And so I have to think about how the ripple effect that has on trying to fit every student's individual schedule into the eight-period day that we have. And so it's a case of many competing priorities and some things that are just simply unbendable in terms of scheduling for students.
Helpful, thank you for that.
Yeah, we refer to those as singletons in the schedule, right? And the more singletons you have, the more complicated it gets in terms of making everything even. If this were the true middle school model where there was no acceleration and there were no students behind grade level, you would get a much more consistent number of kids in classrooms. But you have things like the acceleration law in Illinois, right? There are only so many kids in certain math classes because they qualify that because they're multiple grade levels above, right? And there might be more kids in a, in a grade level math class. And so it really depends on each year, where are your students at, what are the courses they're taking, and then you try and blend it and get it as close as you possibly can. So in certain years, you may have more success with that because you might see more kids in a particular math track, or I don't want to use the word track, but math level. In other years, you may see that more spread out, and that's going to impact how many kids are in each section.
Are we, are we looking at like our accelerated 6th grade students and how many of them there are that come in? You know, like they're integrated into, with peers, but separated out into different math classes with 7th graders, right?
Today?
Yeah.
Today, they are typically, we schedule it typically so that those students who are accelerated and traveling over to the middle schools are grouped with their elementary school peers. There may be one or two instances with some late registrations that there could be a 7th grader mixed in there, but generally speaking, we see, and that's another great option, a great example of, during 3rd period math, the vast majority of our math teachers, because that's when everything aligns, are teaching accelerated students who have come over from the elementary school. So very few middle school students are receiving math instruction during 3rd period because those teachers are occupied right now. And so that's another thing that we will be looking at going into next year. Some of the, you know, some of, some of the sheer quantity will shift over as 6th grade comes over, but we have double accelerated 4th graders that we have to consider in the model as well. And so it's just, it's a continued, you know, look at what is the most efficient and effective way to do all of that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have one more spotlight tonight, and that's our construction progress report with Justin Schultz. I'm sorry, Jordan. Still looking at you, Justin.
Do you want him to come back?
At least it wasn't a different name, so, yeah. Good evening, members of the board and administration. Look forward to giving this update because we're in September, and that's a good thing. And Ben can probably attest even more. He's had more sleepless nights than the rest of us. Few photos, first of Herrick. Again, if you haven't been there, if you don't live nearby, stop by, particularly in the...
Have your ID ready.
And have your ID ready, that's right.
Right.
Yep.
New entrance, grounds are looking great, classrooms looking great, but particularly this center, or the lower pictures, is a centerpiece, I would say, for the library. Looks really sharp. Several pictures of O'Neil then. We've got, again, a bunch of work on the exterior, development in the main office, that's the transaction window there in the lower right, obviously cafeteria, and then new fitness equipment. A few things, again, I won't read through all of this, suffice it to say, it was a big push at the end. This was the biggest, you know, the longest summer in terms of work, most work being put in place. And again, to see the pay applications coming through from the contractors with just how much work was being put in place was staggering in terms of manpower. Again, dozens and dozens of personnel on site every day this summer, pushing, pushing, pushing to get to the finish line. Additionally, a bunch of furniture going into place, right? So coordinating that final push between the contractors, the furniture vendors, the movers, et cetera, was a lot. The district did amazing. Kevin's team in particular was just phenomenal, and it was a lot to come together. A lot of grace from the teaching staff and principals as well as we get to that finish line and do punch lists. And then as we look toward the fall, again, that next phase is underway currently, and so, again, demo underway, so we're looking good in terms of getting ready for November turnover. So definitely on schedule for that last little phase for the middle schools, and that goes for both Herrick and O'Neil. And then we'll be done with those until, and the only last phase will then be the elementary school phase three. For O'Neil, similar story, again, a definite push, and we at times kind of ribbed the O'Neil team versus the Herrick team, how each one is doing. And it was like the, you know, when we watched the Brewer game, right, you got the sausage racing each other, it was like that at times, where it was like ones ahead, ones behind. But again, we got to the finish line, and a huge shout out to, again, Kevin's team, everybody, and especially Ben's team for really pushing it. A lot of hard conversations and some unhappy, unhappy moments as well, to say the least. Again, similarly for Herrick as for O'Neil, is the work continues in those last set of classrooms that will be turned over in November. Elementary school phase two, again, this is the second phase out of three elementary school phases, so you'll see all four schools here, Fairmount, Indian Trail, Lester and Kingsley, renovated spaces, both from the sort of back-of-house mechanical room space, as well as the bathrooms, new office space, et cetera. So really exciting to see these places, these areas renovated. And a lot of work put in place again this summer.
Yeah, I'd like to see video of how you got some of those boilers out.
Uh, yeah.
It doesn't seem...
It's not physically possible, yeah.
Like the one at Lester, for example?
Lester was a tough one.
It's an interior door. I have, like, when we went there, I was like, there's no way. And then it was out and empty, and then it was, had the new equipment...
When we were putting these slides together, that was Kevin's comment, you need to put more of the boiler room pictures in here, right? I mean, honestly, because it is a miraculous thing to see.
They were like terrifying, like they would look where you would film a horror film before, like, it's like they're so bright now and shiny, you know?
Well, that's, yeah, and that's a big piece of it, right? You put some lights in there with new equipment, all of a sudden, it's like, this is actually a great space. It doesn't feel all dingy and horror movie-like. So I do have elementary school phase two, phase one on here still, just because, again, there were several punch list items and some commissioning issues that we still had to follow up this summer to close out from last summer, just because some of that thing, those things you can't do when children are in the classrooms. For phase two, again, really successful push this summer, and now we're into punch lists and wrapping that up, and then tracking open issues with teachers so staff can log in and say, hey, here's an issue that I had in my classroom, some carpet is peeling up or this, you know, the temperature is wonky or something. So they can log in and aggregate that list with Bullion Andrews to address. And then similarly with the commissioning. That'll be ongoing then as we enter into the heating season and getting, getting the equipment underway. Those issues will be first collected, addressed with each of the contractors. In terms of phase three then, as we look toward next summer already, again, it's like you finished one and you're already turning your attention well into next summer. Design is basically 99% complete, it's really just wrapping up here. So the issue for bid drawings are being released, I didn't see them go out today, but those will be issued for bid, and then we'll be back here. So public bidding will open, and then we'll be back in October. The bids will be due in October, so we'll be looking to award those in November. So again, we're on track with what we were doing last summer, or last fall, for awarding those, the phase two projects. The trick here is, again, fewer schools, only three schools, Bel Air and El Ciera are a little bit simpler structurally, right? But it's also a shorter summer, so there's a lot to slime into place, a lot of planning that has to be done. There was a big payoff in terms of all the planning that went into phase two here, in terms of how we executed, especially the construction team executed on this last phase. It was a lot more sane. It's always going to be a little bit nuts during the summer, but this is a lot more successful, and we're anticipating that for this last summer as well. Because less stress also equals less dollars spent, which is a good thing as we look at contingencies, et cetera. Speaking of contingencies, so 94% of project costs have been committed, very few things outstanding. 80% are complete with the overall referendum construction work, and we're about 78% overall allocation on construction contingency. And again, this is just the Bullion Andrews side of it, this is not the district side of the contingency, and I'll show that on the log shortly. So we continue, as I mentioned, to collaborate as a team, the design team, the construction team with the district and ourselves, just to make sure that impacts are minimized and that solutions are sought after that don't balloon into costs that we can't accommodate. This effort was really successful on phase two, and we're proud of that. Overall, picture of where we are at with construction as well as contingency allowances is pictured here. Again, Herrick continues to lag in terms of the amount of costs incurred. And again, this includes projections because now we're into the demo phase, the last phase of construction for those last set of classrooms. So this includes some projections that we're not yet realizing, but we do anticipate needing to draw, put some more funds into there out of other funds that Bullion Andrews is holding on their side, right? So to balance out the projects at the very beginning, you say, hey, we think it's going to be about 5% per project, right? And then you get into it, one's going to cost a little bit more, one's going to cost a little bit less. Issues as issues are addressed. So we anticipate having that conversation at the next board meeting as well. Final picture here, again, the overall picture is really positive, right? So a year ago, we set this owner contingency down to 890 because of allocating for kitchen infrastructure amongst other things prior to that, right? The low voltage doors, et cetera. So we have not touched that sum at the bottom in these last 12-plus months. And again, we're holding for elementary school phase three. That number that we've projected has stayed steady with the addition of that 1.5 sort of float in there, if you will, pre-allocated contingency funds before we bid. Because what we wanted to do was, if you look in that under slash over budget column for phase one, it ended up being about 12% off, right? And again, this includes added funds, right? We said, hey, we want to put doors in, we want to add kabling. So it's not just an overage straight up, right? 14% for phase two, and what we're projecting, again, just to be safe, because we all had that hard conversation a year ago, we put this at 16% for phase three, just to say, hey, we're going to be in a good spot. That is in addition to savings that are coming back from phase two that I just mentioned. We don't, I'm not going to sign my, assign a number to it right now, but we're very confident it's going to be a substantial sum coming back from phase two. And that is not reflected here as savings yet. The other thing that I will mention is that we're still holding the contingencies, or I should say, Bullion Andrews is still holding their contingencies for phase three as we did for the first two phases. This last one of which we saved a lot, right? So projecting forward to next summer, hopefully we're going to be just as aggressive with making sure that we don't have to spend all those monies next summer, and we'll have some savings there. Time will tell on that, but that's our, the work that we have ahead of us. Just making sure I have any other comments here. Yep, so that's, so that wraps it up. Any questions?
I always have questions.
Yeah.
So you talked a lot about contingencies and hold-asides and things like that, and when I look at ES phase three and the 94% committed, right? 94% committed leaves 6% left, right? And the percentage of the projected, the re-projected is about 9%. So where are we making up that 3%?
Say that again, the, oh, yeah, so there's...
So when I did the amount of the total, write your subtotal here.
Yeah.
The amount of your subtotal, the cost allocated to phase three is about 9% of the total budget. And you said we have about 6% that still has yet to be committed, like left to commit, right?
We've already bid out...
And it says...
...stuff in that phase, though.
83,000, it says 0%. So is it, is this number 83,800 incorrect and the 0% incorrect on the committed for phase three? I'm just trying to understand this number.
I will need to check the cell. What it appears to me is that, when I put the 94% down here, that includes what we've said for the owner contingency, right? So even though we've got, so you basically have to take the, call it 17 million, 17 million on 209, right? And that should come out to, or when you back it out, right? So if you back out 17 million plus what we haven't purchased for furniture and what we haven't purchased for technology, if you put those in aggregate together, they should add up to that 6%. I'd have to, I mean...
And not the 9%?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, let's...
Yeah, because we've only, we've only purchased very little equipment for phase...
You're doing it off of this total 209?
Exactly.
Not the total 187?
Exactly, yep.
Okay. So that's probably where I'm at, is my number.
Well, Melissa, we will have Jordan clarify and then the...
I'll double-check that, just to make sure, yeah.
No, I'm like, don't make me pull money from anywhere else.
Yeah, no, I...
Get in the referendum.
We will, yeah. And I never mind crunching more numbers on.
Medus, right? Like, we made promises, so, okay.
I never mind crunching more numbers on spreadsheets. This was my conversation with Amy from White this morning was the amount of times that we are sitting in a spreadsheet.
And if you can get anything on that design, you know, overage that we have, I know on contract it's a percent, flat percentage, but I hate that.
Yeah.
And I hate that they made a mistake last year and I still don't think they gave us enough back on that. So we can, you know, no offense, White, if you're listening in here, but I don't like paying that much.
I agree, I would agree, yeah. Yeah, it, again, yeah, we had to deal with it at the time and we haven't budged on that one.
But there's, that's going to go up, right?
No, we've already incurred that, yep. So there's a little.
So there's no design left in the.
There are some minor adjustments, so there's, we're actually getting back a few dol, again, we, this is why she and I were talking this morning, is just, we have to basically true up their invoicing because right now they budget per, or they invoice per project and part of their invoicing lines up with what their, sorry, alternates. So we have alternates on the bids, right? When those alternates are budgeted, White's fee applies at 100% of their fee. If the alternate is not accepted, we only have to pay for 80% of it. So we just have to do a little bit of truing up for alternates that were either not accepted or were accepted. So there, we're mostly lined up together in terms of what she's projecting and what I'm projecting, but it's getting into some of those nuances, like for example, cabling, right? Or abatement. So they didn't technically design abatement, so we have to take Bullion Andrews pay apps, say, pull the abatement out, White does not get a fee on that abatement piece because they didn't design that piece, right? Cabling, they did design, even though we pulled part of that out of Bullion Andrews' scope. So it's a little bit messy, but yes, I keep very tight tabs on, on where that's at.
Yeah, but where their redesign costs us more money because of things that they did, I think, you know, delayed our bidding, yada, yada, yada.
Absolutely.
You know how I feel about it. Go advocate, I trust you.
100%, yeah.
I'll say it at every meeting that you're here.
I, I don't mind it. I don't mind it. I think it's important, it's critical to advocate, honestly. And, and we are dealing with, with a couple of minor issues. Nothing that's ginormous, but there are a couple of minor issues that need to be addressed and we have those hard conversations, even, even with the current phase, yeah. Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
Not a question, but a comment of just reiterating the thank yous to your team, to every worker that was there, to the amazing crew here at 58, to those teachers who worked magic and got those classrooms ready in a very short amount of time and getting our kids back by, after that Labor Day and the world's longest summer. I am so excited, though we have difficult conversations to have about a budget and other things, but for this referendum, so all of this money of showing our community how this referendum has been used to create these generations to come buildings that are really going to enhance learning and from the not so cool things at our elementary schools with the safer air and the air conditioning, they don't look as, but for our community to be able to see how much we invested in the middle schools that all of our students will go through is just amazing. So I really look forward to continuing to thank you for everyone and to continue to let other stakeholders, even people who don't have kids in our schools right now, but to see what Downers Grove has done for public education is just amazing. So thank you.
Well, yeah. Huge thank you to, I mean, Dr. Russell, Kevin, Jeff, I don't know if Jeff's even here today, but I mean, honestly, they are, they're the ones who are the heroes, truly. It's, they put through, they put up with a lot. They push hard.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jordan.
All right, we're moving on to reports to the board. First up is going to be the superintendent report with Dr. Russell.
I'm going to be very brief, just because we've already had so many presentations. I know we have a lot of people in the audience as well. Just a couple of quick things. For personnel, we have mandated reports that we have to put out. The first one is the 2526 IMRF compensation report. That's the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for our classified employees. That has to be posted six days within budget approval, so assuming the board approves the budget, that will be posted this week. Also, by October 1st, every year, we have to put the previous year's teacher and administrator salary and benefits report on the website. Justin has completed all of those and they will be posted to meet the deadlines. In terms of curriculum instruction, these are two of our favorite weeks coming up. We have our elementary curriculum nights this week and then next week we have our middle school and preschool curriculum nights. Always very well attended, we're grateful to our parents for attending. It's a great chance to meet your teacher and to see what is on the docket for the upcoming school year. So we're expecting a lot of visitors over the next two weeks to our schools, which we're thrilled to have. I'm going to skip finance, obviously, and with technology, this is always a time of year, especially with construction, you get everything ready and then maybe an Apple TV's not working or this isn't working over here. So James and his entire team are doing a wonderful job just making sure that everything does get ready. Terms of special services, one of the reminders that we want to give the community, early intervention is so key to assisting students when they're younger. School districts in Illinois are required to meet the needs of our special education students from age three all the way up to 21. And the district does offer free preschool and developmental screenings throughout the school year. These are essential. If a parent is interested in that, please contact the preschool office and they will arrange those screenings for you. In terms of public relations, if you didn't catch it on NBC, we are always looking for new grants to help our students and teachers out. And Office Depot generously donated $10,000 for teacher supplies and for student supplies at both O'Neil and Herrick. So we're very excited to help fill out our new spaces, but also meet the needs of our students. And it was a great surprise on opening day for our middle school teachers. So I want to thank Julie Relahan for working behind the scenes and also our Education Foundation, who we partnered with to make this grant possible. And then finally, I'm going to put in a plug for Oktoberfest for our Education Foundation weekend, or, excuse me, our Education Foundation this weekend. That's Friday night in September. If you're interested in that and we would encourage you to attend, that is all on the Education Foundation's website.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for Kevin? All right, now for our monthly business and treasures report, I don't know what else you could possibly have to say tonight, but Dr. Harris.
I have another hour and a half of the material to go over here, everyone.
I believe we discussed 30 seconds, Dr. Harris.
I think I said 60. Give me 60. All right, so your date reports are up for July and August. Just reminding you that we didn't have a July report because we didn't have budget numbers set, we didn't have a lot of the, the turnover at the end of the year stuff in, in place there. When I'm done speaking, I'll, I'll ask for any questions on that. Two action items tonight, one is we are asking the board to approve the rental rates and tiers. No changes from the August presentation. Just give you the month to think about it and get feedback from the community. And then the other thing is there, there's a resolution to transfer funds from the working cash fund to the transportation fund, retroactive to June 30th of 2025. There was a deficit of approximately $1.1 million on that date. The auditors don't like to see that, so we are asking the board to make that transfer. And then when the, the funds become available through property tax collections, that automatically goes back without the need for an additional resolution. That's it.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments?
Just real fast, to clarify though, the fees, that was the same from August, but we're no longer purchasing that software that was mentioned, like for scheduling.
I don't believe a decision has been made on the software.
But that's not part of the thing we're voting on tonight.
The board, that will not hit the threshold where we would need to go to the board to ask for approval on that one.
Okay.
But the, the belief is, we firmly believe that if we do go the route of software, the, the rental fees will more than cover the cost of the software.
Okay.
And we're expecting, you know, with the, with the rates doubling and with, with interest in our, in our, in our beautiful new facilities, we're expecting that to be a win for the district either way.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Bring us to our committees. The policy committee has not met since the last board meeting. Neither has the legislative committee. The financial advisory committee did meet last Friday, which was the 3rd of September. I think we've said enough about what was covered on there. What I'll just tell you is that coming up next week, we really are going to be focusing on, certainly have conversations around the five-year plan, the 35% fund balance component of it. We're also going to start talking about opportunities, you know, as, as Dr. Harris' part of land is, how do we start really advocating for those mandated categoricals and prioritizing those, potentially even over evidence-based funding, which is going to be something that's going to be important to DuPage County over the next couple of years. But other than that, I think you heard pretty exhaustively the, the same kind of conversations we were having in FAC unless you think there was something that didn't give it, okay. So that concludes my report. Any questions? All right. The district leadership team has not met, but the health and wellness committee did meet on the 25th of August. Number Bernard.
Yep. During that meeting, the committee received an update from Gallagher, formally assured partners. In the spirit of brevity, I'll highlight two points really discussed in that meeting. The update was centered around financial analysis, benchmarking reports and a wellness update, really in prep for providing information for the next meeting upcoming at the end of this month, which will prepare us leading into the open enrollment cycle. Financial analysis, really what they shared was a report on 2025 and '26 projected cost versus funding against our four plans. In the spirit of economic headwinds that we heard about not only impacting our district earlier, those are going to impact healthcare as well as you can anticipate. So we are anticipating increased costs to be discussed at the meeting coming up at the end of this month. Here's the positive news on that front. The estimates shared in that update around cost increase were roughly half what they were seeing for other self-insured cohorts. So positive news on that front. Other positive news to report was on the benchmarking report they shared. They compared District 58's plans, not just benefits, medical dental division as well against cohorts and all of those really were showing market-leading or above plans compared to that benchmark. So next meeting at the end of this month and that'll lead us into decisions prior to open enrollment.
Fantastic. Questions or comments regarding health and wellness? All right, then final report will be the SACID report with Dr. Russell.
Yeah, so for SACID, again, it's budget season for SACID, so one of the biggest pushes superintendents on the board have been pushing SACID is to get our true billing statements as we all finalize our budgets. We did get all of our billing, as Dr. Harris alluded to in his presentation, so we're all set to go. We do have contingency in our budget though, as Dr. Harris said, it's not just moving students throughout the year. Sometimes our students may not be finding the level of success that we had hoped and so we may choose to partner with SACID to meet the needs of an individual student. And then the other big thing that we're continuing to talk about, both at the facilities and finance committee, is the available spacing for SACID to meet the needs of its students. As I've shared before, the central office at SACID, which also houses the high school transition program, is less than ideal. One of the things we're encouraging SACID, given the economic realities of all of its member districts, is that this is not necessarily the time to go out and plan for big scale things. What other options do we have in terms of other facilities that may be available within our communities rather than building new? Very similar conversations that we had when we were discussing our future home for a district office before the partnership with the village became available. So I'm expecting that to move in the fall in terms of the overall direction and you can expect future updates. We'll talk about facilities and design at SACID.
Okay, wonderful. Questions or comments on SACID? All right, I have no discussion items on the agenda tonight, so we are going to move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but it is not intended to be a time for members of the audience to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff when appropriate. Yep. All right, it looks like I've got eight cards tonight. The board has allotted 30 minutes for public comment this evening. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes to allow everyone the opportunity. But I do want to thank you guys for your patience tonight. I think we have a big crowd here tonight. So at this point, I'd like, and when you please step up, state your name and your school and then please leave your comment. First up, I have, it looks like Daniel Wentz, Kingsley. Want to talk about kindergarten class size?
All right.
Can we make a switch or not?
Sure, that's fine. Who, who are you?
By the way, I'm there somewhere.
Okay. I just want to make sure I put the notes with the right card. There we go, I see you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. We appreciate you guys taking the time and obviously the continued dedication you have to our community, right? Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jordan Delay and I'm here as a parent and educator to advocate for additional classroom support in our kindergarten, Kingsley kindergarten program. Either through an addition of a third teacher or at the very least the hiring of a second full-time instructional aide. I want to acknowledge and thank you for already adding one instructional aide this year and it's been a meaningful step forward. But with 56 kindergartners, students split between two teachers, we are still far from meeting the level of support these children require. At a minimum, we are asking that a second aide be added so that each classroom has their own aide and every child has the chance to be seen, supported and guided in these critical first years of school. As you know, kindergarten sets the foundation for everything that follows in the child's education. It's where they build confidence, learn to interact with peers and begin acquiring the literacy and math skills that shape their futures. But right now, with a large number of very young learners, teachers are forced to focus more on managing the group than on actual instruction. Transitions take longer, behaviors are harder to manage and the risk is that some students quietly slip through the cracks or even worse, a child's safety is at risk because they are too many children to manage. This is not a reflection of the teachers themselves, I want to be very clear about that, right? This is not a reflection of the teachers themselves. Our kindergarten teachers are beloved by current and past students alike. They are experienced, dedicated and have already given so much to our community, but even the best teachers can only do so much without enough hands in the room. Supporting them with additional staff ensures they can continue teaching at the excellent level they are known for, instead of being stretched thin just to maintain order. I say this also as educator myself, with 17 years of teaching experience. I deeply understand the importance of teaching, teachers feeling supported and valued by their school board and their administration. When teachers have the resources they need, they can focus on their true calling, teaching and inspiring students. When they don't, burnout becomes inevitable. And districts risk losing the very kind, the very kind of highly qualified, passionate educators who make a community proud. Adding additional support isn't just an investment in students, it's also an investment in teacher retention and long-term excellence. I know budgets are tight, as we've discussed greatly tonight, right? Budgets are tight and these decisions are not easy, but this is not about creating ideal conditions, it's about meeting the minimum conditions our children deserve. A second instructional aide is not a luxury, it's a necessity. Without it, we risk undermining both student growth and teacher wellbeing. Let's invest in our youngest learners now and in the teachers who guide them. The return on that investment will last for years to come. Thank you for your time and for the commitments to our schools and our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Danielle, did you want to go next? All right. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Wentz and I'm a Kingsley kindergarten parent and I'm also a kindergarten teacher in a neighboring district. And just a couple of other points to echo some of the statements that you just heard. As children are entering kindergarten, they are really just beginning their school journey. Each child brings unique strengths and challenges, many of which are still emerging and unknown. Smaller class sizes give teachers the time and space to truly see each child, identify their needs early and provide the individualized support that sets the foundation for lifelong learning and success. With 28 kindergarten students under the supervision of just one teacher, physical safety becomes a significant concern. At this age, children require close monitoring as they are still learning routines and boundaries. Larger class sizes make it more difficult to ensure all students are accounted for during transitions, recess or even emergencies. In such large groups, the possibility of a child wandering off or becoming lost also arises as one adult cannot reasonably keep constant watch over so, so many young learners all at once. And I think it's important to note, during these first few weeks of school, all hands were on deck in the kindergarten classrooms. There were a lot of specialists in the room, different support teachers and staff stepping in to manage the large class size. The reality is that level of support is not sustainable, as those staff members are going to have to return to their primary roles and responsibilities, again leaving these teachers with 28 students. And again, I understand there is one aide, but that aide is split between the two classes, which is a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Avram.
Did I get that close?
Close enough.
All right.
All right, I'm Joe Avram. Thank you all, appreciate your time tonight. I know you had a very long meeting already. Thank you to all the parents supporting us. And again, you know, we've been in communication with you. I appreciate the help you've already provided and the assistance we're getting with one aide. Again, to reiterate what we've been saying, we have concerns with, you know, that many kids in a classroom. I know you've had some suggestions on potentially pushing in more of our specialists, and as we just heard, we're going to see more and more need for those specialists elsewhere. Dr. Harris talked about that a little bit, as we're seeing more kids requiring special services. So that's not realistic, I guess, to me. So I'm hoping that we can get another aide to support our kids. Justin, if I may borrow from year two, you said 29 kids in one classroom doesn't have the same experience as 20. So for the foundation of their education, I think it's really important that we bring that number as far down as possible. So we have less kids to each educator. So I appreciate your consideration, and I hope we can get one more aide in the classrooms. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Donahue, also Kingsley. Welcome.
Good evening. Budget day, perfect day for us to be here. I'm just going to read to keep it short, sweet, and simple. "We're fortunate to have dedicated and hard-working kindergarten teachers who give their all to our children. I heard today about one additional aide, which I was grateful for, added because it was over the recommended threshold. It is a start, but I don't believe it is enough. This isn't the sixth-grade class we heard about today, it is kindergarten. Expecting a single teacher to manage 28 or more children with a single floater is unreasonable and unfair to both teachers and the students. While our teachers are doing an incredible job, this situation is not sustainable and compromises the direct attention and support of our children. Many of our students enter kindergarten with any prior preschool experience. They are learning essential skills such as raising their hand, standing in line, and practicing manners alongside foundational academic knowledge. These are crucial developmental milestones that require time and individual attention. I urge each of you to reflect on this. Many of you are parents yourselves. If you found yourselves in this situation as either a parent or a teacher, I believe you would advocate for what is right, just as I am doing today. We must prioritize our children's education and support our teachers by providing the resources they need to succeed." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Fonman.
Evening. My name is Catherine Fonman, and I'm a teacher and a mother. My son George is a kindergartner at Kingsley as well, so I'm here advocating for an additional aide or possibly full-time teacher that could maybe share the time in each of the two classrooms. I've worked for over 20 years in Lamont, and we moved our family here to this community because of the schools. You have a great school district, the teachers so far, more new to your district, they've been wonderful. But I think 28, when I saw that, when we counted the cubbies on the meeting greet and George's cubby was in the hallway, I was completely shocked that that even got to day one, that it was that high of a number. So I understand what the limits, the thresholds, the targets of 24 seems like a great number. But even the Illinois State Board of Education seeks a maximum of 20 students in a kindergarten for effective learning, that's their guideline. So 24 target, I understand there's obviously a little bit of a financial issues going on here that we were shown tonight, but I do think that something needs to be done for these 56 kindergartners this year. This seems much too severe of a high number that their learning is definitely going to be impacted. So hopefully, we can come to something that will be a little bit more than just the one aide split between the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda Delay.
Thank you. I'll keep it really short because they're just stealing everything I wanted to say. Most, first and foremost, thank you so much for all of your time and dedication and to our teachers and to our students and your service, the amount of hours that you must spend in this room seems obscene, just being here for one night. So thank you. And thank you for really reading all of our emails that have been going back and forth over the summer about this. So overall, I'm really proud of this district, and I'm a teacher within the community as well, and a teacher at the high school level. But just knowing my experience as the high school teacher there, I ended up moving my family as well to Downers Grove because I was so proud of our school district. So I'm proud of our district, and I trust that you all will do what is needed of our students. And I've been in communication with several different admin, and I trust that that will happen, if it needs to happen. And I do firmly believe that it needs to happen, based on feedback that I've been receiving, especially from my daughter, when she's coming home and telling me that there's somebody pinching and spitting every day, and not at fault of the teacher, but the teacher is able to catch it sometimes, but not all of the time, because there are 28 of them in the classroom. And it does become a behavioral and a safety concern when the teacher can't intervene every time when things like that happen. So thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Allison Stoner.
Hi.
Welcome.
Before you start the timer, I know your husband, Board Leader Hannah. Did I say Chelsea? I said hi. I like checked to make sure you were still there, because when we were buying our house, he was like, "Touchstone is great, my wife's on the board." So here I am. So my name is Allison Stoner. I'm the mom of two kids who attend Kingsley. One is in second grade, and she's had a fabulous, fabulous experience. I will also try and kind of condense my two pages that I had going on here, just because everyone has been speaking to the same thing. I would like to advocate for a third kindergarten teacher. My job is an occupational therapist. I've spent my entire career working with young children. Sorry, it's late at night. I've had the privilege of working in multiple districts and at a therapeutic day school. I have had the unique opportunity of being a parent in an elementary school and then also working in elementary schools. So I'm that resource person that you guys are talking about, that you're saying are supporting the classrooms right now. And I will say, as a professional, it's not sustainable, right? I have a caseload of legally required IEP minutes, and so I know that that's what's going to happen, is that the professionals that Kingsley is relying on right now are going to be pulled back to their original jobs. Again, we bought our house because of the schools, and I looked up Kingsley, and it was in the top 10% of Illinois schools. And I worked at an elementary school that was in the top 10% of Illinois schools, and I was like, "This is going to be great." And it has been. But I'll just leave you with Graham's comment of his first day. I asked him how it was, and he said, "There's a lot of kids, mama."
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Katie Kessner.
My name is Katie Kessner. I have two children in the district, both Kingsley students. I have a fourth grader, who, much like many of the parents have said today, has had an excellent experience. He had the same kindergarten teacher that my daughter now has, and we loved her then, and I have every confidence in what she will do this year. My daughter is a kindergartner at Kingsley this year, and I'm here tonight as a concerned parent and to ask the board to take action to address the high number of children in these classrooms in Kingsley this year. The current setting of 28 children in each class is not going to support effective or differentiated instruction for these kids. This is especially important at the kindergarten level. Children at this age have had a wide range of educational experiences, from no preschool education to prior experience with full-day academics. When my son entered kindergarten, he was reading simple books already. My kindergarten daughter knows most of her letters, but not all, and she's certainly not reading yet. I recognize that that's a perfectly acceptable level of knowledge for a kindergartner, but just within my own children's experiences, there's a sizable gap between their skills entering kindergarten. This is only a small snapshot of the range of abilities our teachers are navigating every day. With the current classroom numbers, even the most effective and experienced teacher will have less time to give each student, less time for direct individual assistance, and less ability to meet the individual needs of each child. Teachable moments will be missed. Additionally, the board must consider that some of these children may have specialized educational needs that are yet to be identified, as these children may just be entering the educational settings. Less effective academic, social, and emotional behaviors will go unwitnessed and unaddressed when only one adult is supervising 28 children. A third teacher or two full-time instructional assistants would allow for more flexibility and consistency to individualize educational strategies to each child's abilities and needs. I'm also very concerned about how this larger group of children moves throughout their day. Transitions are especially challenging with large groups of young children. Due to the high number of children in the classroom, as Catherine also mentioned, my daughter, along with at least three or four other of the kindergarten students, has been assigned a cubby outside of the classroom, while the rest of her classmates are contained within the classroom for these transitions. At the start and end of each day, the small group of kindergartners are separated from the class to unpack or pack up their backpacks. My daughter tells me there isn't always an adult assisting them at these times. These transitions are likely only happening at the start and end of the day right now, but as the weather turns colder, these kiddos are going to be making these transitions multiple times a day for recess. I expect that the addition of this additional instructional assistant will help, but we still have multiple children that are in this position. These are our youngest and most vulnerable students. More and consistent adult supervision for these classes means safer transitions, smoother routines, and ultimately more learning time, which is what we all care about for these kids. I thank the board for this opportunity to speak, and I request that it is past time to take more action. One instructional assistant dividing their time across two classrooms, I was going to say remains unfilled, but we found out tonight it was filled, which we do appreciate, but it simply does not address the concerns that I and my fellow parents have shared tonight. While we've heard the fiscal concerns of the board, we've also heard how all of you value the education of our children and our community. At this time, I request that the board take expedited action to hire a third kindergarten teacher or minimally two full-time instructional assistants to support our teachers and our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Those are all the cards I've received. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? All right, please step up, state your name and your attendance area, and any organization might be part of.
I apologize, we only saw the sign-in sheet, not the basket. My name is Kate Rendak. I am a mom of three.
Your last name?
Rendak, R-E-N-D-A-K.
Okay.
And I am mom to three students at Kingsley. My youngest started kindergarten this year, and I wasn't getting emotional when I was practicing this, but as my fellow parents have addressed, we feel like it's time for additional action. We know you already took one step to ease the overcrowding in our classrooms, but I think the time that it's a parent and necessary is now, with 28 kids in one classroom at a time and one person overseeing their learning, at least for part of the day. When I've asked my brand-new kindergartner about her first week, I hear about her new friends and excitement about learning, but I also hear about a peer talking over the teacher, hitting and kicking. She's eager to learn but is being hindered in an overcrowded classroom. Having two previous kids go through Kingsley kindergarten, I have firsthand knowledge that our kindergarten teachers are exceptional, but they cannot excel if they're not properly supported. Reducing the ratio will create a more focused and productive learning environment for our youngest learners who currently have our largest class sizes across K through six in the district. We need our young learners to not be battling distractions and waiting for one-on-one support. Our kids deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Could you state your name and attendance area if you could potentially spell your last name, too?
Sure. I'm Rob Marchese, M-A-R-C-H-E-S-E, and my daughter's a kindergartner at Kingsley. I'm an educator, about last 15 years. I've worked at multiple schools with staffing problems and with wonderful staff. And if it's one thing I've taken away from all of these things, is without adequate staff, all students, all students will miss out. Each and every one, those little moments like people have spoken about before are so important. And like what said before, with the youngest of the young, the ones that are just starting, we're teaching these routines, we're teaching these expectations. To put that on the shoulders, to put 28 children on the shoulders of one educator, that's a huge burden, a huge responsibility. Our kids will miss out. They'll miss out on that hands-on learning experience, that rich experience that Downers Grove provides, it always has. A third teacher, a third teacher, a real teacher, a real educator, not just help, that will make this happen safely and effectively. Now, there's also other issues. We got to look at the microcosm, the right now, and the macro, the big picture. Think of the emotional distress, the academic gaps, behavioral challenges. If those aren't recognized early on, they will grow. Early intervention, we're all in education now. You guys on the board, you guys talk education, parents, grandparents, early intervention is going to be the key to their success, and this is our first step. We need to see this happen. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm the last of the delinquents with public comments, so I apologize.
No, you're good.
Hi. I'm Laura Marchese, same spelling.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for staying. I know you guys have to, but I am the parent of a kindergartner, and we also have a second grader at Kingsley. Kindergarten is meant to be a place where children feel safe, supported, and excited to learn. But right now, with 56 five-year-olds and only two teachers, that is not the reality. In the first week of school, I've personally heard of both physical and verbal aggression from multiple children in multiple classrooms. While I understand this isn't unusual for the age, five-year-olds are still learning how to manage big feelings, share space, and treat others with kindness, this is exactly why they need more adults in the room. When situations like this arise, children need immediate guidance and redirection. Without it, problems escalate, other students feel unsafe, and valuable learning time is lost. Our teachers are doing everything they possibly can, but the truth is, even the most skilled educators cannot be everywhere at once. When their attention is divided, something has to give, and unfortunately, it's often instruction time or the quieter students who don't always ask for help. Adding a third teacher or at the very least a second full-time instructional aide would make an immediate difference. Smaller groups would mean calmer classrooms, stronger routines, and more one-on-one support. Students would feel secure and better able to focus, and teachers could actually spend more time teaching rather than just managing. I understand there's also a cost factor. If we don't invest in proper support now, we are going to pay far more later. Children who fall behind early often require additional interventions, tutoring, or specialized resources as they move through school. Preventing that now with a third teacher is not only the right thing to do for our kids, it is the most practical and cost-effective decision for the district. Kindergarten only happens once. We only have one chance to make sure it sets our children up for success academically, socially, and emotionally. Speaking as a parent, I wasn't going to cry. I just want to know that when I send my daughter to school, she is safe, supported, and given the best chance to thrive. That is something every family in this community wants and every child deserves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, was that everyone wishing to speak? Okay, thank you for your time. Next up on the agenda is our approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to those minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th, 2025 regular meeting as presented? from the August 11th, 2025, regular meeting as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to approve the minutes of the August 11th, 2025, regular meeting as presented. We have a consent agenda tonight. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report, financial statements, consisting of the list of bills, and its summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried. The consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. We have some recommendations for action tonight. First up is the fiscal year 2026 budget. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented. We have a memorandum of understanding for additional work hours for registered nurses at preschool buildings. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for additional work hours for registered nurses at preschool buildings?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to approve the memorandum of understanding for additional work hours for registered nurses at preschool buildings. We have a press issue 119 policy updates. Is there a motion to approve the policy updates from press issue 119 as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to approve the policy updates for press issue 119 as presented. We have a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund for fiscal year '25. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing this transfer of monies for the working cash fund for FY '25?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund for fiscal year '25. Last up, we have building rental rates. Is there a motion to approve the building rental rates and tiers as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion on that? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to approve the building rental rates and tiers as presented. A couple of announcements. Monday, September 29th, 3:45 p.m., will be the next Health and Wellness Committee meeting, taking place in the Herick Library. October 1st, 3:45, at the Civic Center will be Legislative Committee. Then at 7:00 a.m. on Friday, October 10th, will be the FAC back here at the Civic Center. And then Monday, October 16th, at 7:00 p.m., will be our next regular board meeting, also right here at the Downers Grove Civic Center. The board does need to go into closed for a very brief closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed to discuss the minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purpose of the approval of the body of minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06, 5 ILCS 120, 2C 21?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Normally, I let us, if no one wants to talk about minutes, but these are a semi-annual review. I'm assuming most people don't have a lot to discuss, but we technically have to go back into closed. So, all right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannis?
Aye.
Member Olchik?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Member Bernard?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried. The board will now go into a closed session to discuss the minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act,[1789.03]